Go ahead and call the four o'clock, October 27th meeting to order if I can get a roll call please.
Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
At this time, all who are able, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'm sure Mr. Thompson will be glad to see you all here for his award today.[55.82][55.82](Laughter) I'm sure that's why they're all here.
Item 3.1, the day of November 1, 2014, is Extra Mile Day in the city of Salina. Clay Thompson, Serving Salina Together Chair, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Whereas Salina, Kansas, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort to address needs through the volunteer service; and whereas Salina, Kansas, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly through their total effort, commitment, and conviction to the betterment of self, family, neighborhood, and community; and whereas Salina, Kansas, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community; and whereas Salina, Kansas, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is pleased to join the support of Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2014. Now therefore, I, Aaron, Householder, Mayor, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2014 to be an Extra Mile Day in Salina, Kansas. I'd like to also just add to that, both our Mayor and our Vice Mayor have continually contributed to the service days that go on in Salina, and we really appreciate their support. And then from the staff side, we continue to get the kind of support that's necessary for us to carry out the kind of things we do.
On your cleanup data this year, how many, what did you guys have out? Because I knew you did Santa Fe and...
Yeah, we had about 140 people that participated. They did some cleanup along Santa Fe, painted some at Ashby House. We made another 125 rain barrels. What else, Nancy?
Some was from River, I thought some from River.
The River, yeah.
Yeah, oh, and you're right, the medallions on...
And most of the cadets were working on the river, so.
On there as well, so.
Yeah, and John proved that he can burn a hot dog.
(Laughter) Oh, did he do that again?[206.81][206.81](Laughter) All right. Do you have any other events, man? That's the big one, I mean...
That's the big one, yeah.
Okay.
We'll be going again this fall.
Okay, and a date picked out yet, or?
I think it's around October 21st, something like that.
Next spring.
Next spring.
Spring, okay, yeah.
Do you know what date yet on that, or yet? Still planning? Okay. I've got your signed copy up here.
Okay.
And thanks, everyone who was involved in that project. That's really a, they've had as many as, I don't know, shoot, a couple of years ago, 3, 400, 500 people out on those deals, so it grows, and so it's been a really nice way to take ownership of our community, so it's very nice, so. This moves us on to the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who wants to bring something before the Commission that is not on today's agenda to come and speak before us. Just, we'd ask that you give your name and address. Great, okay.
Dennis is going to pass something out to you. Over the weekend, I found two water quality reports that come in the Water Bill, and these are 2000... Be curious and see what it says about fluoride. So I did, and we just made you a copy of what it does say. Did I say my name? I don't think I did.
I think we know who you are.
Lutryon 2122.
The At Home Players.
I think you know who I am, but anyway, for the record, on Leland Way. The first column says, and this is the water quality data table for everybody back there, the first column says contaminants, it doesn't call it a chemical, it calls it a contaminant. So I thought, maybe I better read and see what that really means. So I did. A contaminant is a substance or organism that causes contamination. Well, then I thought I better look up contaminate. Contaminate, to render impure. Now remember, we're connecting this to Salina's water. To render impure, to soil, stain, or pollute. To render unfit for use through introduction of a substance that is harmful or injurious. To make impure or unclean. And that's the reason we're adding our fluoride. Then we go over to the other side, and it says typical source, erosion of natural deposits, water additive which promotes strong teeth, and that should just be water additive, we can't prove that it gives strong teeth. But here's the main point. It's the discharge from fertilizer and aluminum factories, and that's what we've been saying all along, that our fluoride comes from the fertilizer industry, which is a toxin and a poison. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Alan Reed. I am an orthodontist. I've been in practice in Salina for 27 years. My office is at 920 East Cloud. The question for today is, who do you believe? A small group of activists have submitted a petition leading to a question on the ballot. These activists state that the practice of adding fluoride to the public water should be discontinued. They claim that fluoride is toxic and harmful, and that it causes all sorts of frightening problems. The most extreme members of this anti-fluoride movement will tell you that public water fluoridation is a vast conspiracy concocted by the government, big corporations, and the healthcare industry. They will tell you it is intended to silence the population and keep them in order with mind-controlling mass medication.
I like the sound of that.
You would go for that if we could do it?
If that doesn't, yeah, can we get some of that? We could, yeah.
On the other side of the issue are our dentists, our physicians, and our pharmacists. They tell us that fluoridated water is safe and effective. They have seen the beneficial reduction in dental disease without any associated health risks. Fluoride is not a toxic waste product. Fluoride is not a mass medication. It is a refined mineral from the ground. It is distributed to water utilities all around the world. It is repeatedly tested for contaminants. The water utilities use the fluoride product that is most economical and efficient for the addition of the optimal level of fluoride to the water. It costs Salina only 20 cents per person to fluoridate our water for a full year. Water fluoridation is the single most cost-effective health benefit in the history of modern healthcare. Fluoride has been studied for over 60 years. There are hundreds of scientific research studies published in peer-reviewed scientific journals proving the effectiveness and safety of water fluoridation. There is not one single legitimate published scientific study showing any harmful effects from the optimal level of fluoride in a public water supply. There is not one single person that has been documented to have been harmed by the optimal level of fluoride in our water. There is an abundance of published scientific studies showing a significant decrease in the incidence of tooth decay in communities fluoridated with water supplies. These studies show that fluoride benefits both children and adults. So who should you believe? Should you believe a few extremists making unsubstantiated claims opposing water fluoridation who misquote, misinterpret, or misunderstand scientific evidence? Who attempt to frighten you with horror stories, false information, or conspiracy theories? Or should you believe your healthcare professionals who have seen the benefits of water fluoridation? Should you believe your doctors and dentists who know how to properly interpret and understand scientific research? Should you believe the professionals and scientists who know how to recognize bad research and are not influenced by anecdotal nonsense? If you're not sure, ask your family physician, dentist, or pharmacist. If you trust them for your health and dental care, you can trust them for answers to this question. Make the right choice. Keep fluoride in Salina's water. Preserve the most cost-effective health benefit in the history of modern healthcare. Preserve it for us, and preserve it for the future generations of Salina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Well, we got a full house here today, don't we? That's great. I have some information to pass out. I don't want to do this, but I was going to read my speech, and I want you to follow along at the same time. Okay, Mr. David, or Mr. Alan Reed said today, not a single person has ever been harmed. Okay? To Dr. Alan Reed, a local dentist.
Sir, I think he said...
Can you make your comments to us and not to other people that chose to just...
Sure, he was just up...
Yeah, but I'm sure that you can address us and not other citizens, please. Thank you.
A challenge to pro-fluoride dentists at the last meeting, I made it, to produce the best peer-reviewed study to prove that fluoride is beneficial. Dr. Reed decided to reverse the challenge, and it was accepted. Reed's challenge, and here's the email quote, "I will pay you $550 to show me scientific evidence of one single person harmed by fluoridation of the public water supply." Enclosed in the second page of your information is an abstract short summary from New England Journal of Medicine, along with a five-page comprehensive report from the New England Journal of Medicine, with 24 references cited that included biochemical measurements, environmental investigation, dose estimates, and statistical analysis. All the conditions of this challenge have been met. Number one, the scientific evidence from the New England Journal of Medicine and 24 peer-reviewed references. And number two, the single person harmed is actually 286, and there was one death. And number three, the public water supply in Hooper Bay, Alaska. It is requested that the five city commissioners render a decision based on this challenge and the submitted facts. And thank you very much for listening to what I have just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here have anything to bring? Great, pure, of course.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Allison Lesko, general dentist. My office is 1920 South Ohio. Obviously, Dr. Reed spoke a lot about the science, so I was just going to kind of go on the other side of that coin and say, as a general dentist, both I'm practicing in Kansas City and now in Salina for the last six and a half years, I have treated a lot of children. I have taken them to the hospital, I've taken them with IV sedation. And one thing that people need to understand is, as a health provider, taking out 18 teeth on a child that only has 20 teeth because of the cavities, you'll never understand how that feels to be that dentist to do that. You'll never understand what that means for the child growing up and being three years old and not being able to talk correctly, not being able to chew correctly, being made fun of. This is something that extends through their life until they're getting their teeth, and even after then, those scars are so deep. You know, I know we talk a lot about the children who are coming from poor communities, not having the availability of toothbrushes, toothpaste, dental care, things like that. That's definitely that child. But there's also children who are growing up, and we have a lot of children in this room today that have grown up in Salina, they probably have dental care and have toothbrushes and floss and toothpaste. But they're going to grow up, and as they do, they're going to be drinking on caterades, they're going to have coffees, maybe sipping on their sodas, and they're going to do things that are going to try to injure their teeth. And growing up with strong teeth, with fluoride in the water, is going to give them that ability to just have an extra oomph against those attacks. That's 25 percent decrease of cavities, not just for those children that can't afford dental care, but for those that are growing up and being able to be healthy adults. It's just something to think about those, and know that we all make mistakes, and we all do things that aren't perfect in our dental health, and that growing up with fluoride in the water is like having calcium. It's going to build strong bones, so when you're a clumsy kid, you're protected; when you're a clumsy adult, you're protected there too. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Information from, information requests, I refer to, nice wait.
I think we, I think there was, there was a couple.
Dennis Benoit, 1773, 20th Road in Ellsworth County, but I was born in Salina. I consider this my home. Just a quick review for everybody at home that has been keeping track of everything. This is what set me on fire. 2010 CDC Dental Fluorosis Study from 1999 to 2004. And what I just gave the city commissioners is some, some of the latest found-out information that was not released. It was in a Freedom of Information Request, and that's how we got that. The first memorandum last week said, in 1962, the Health Department was concerned about blacks having, black children having twice as much dental fluorosis as the whites. This, this is the newest information that was not released. It is now available through fluoridealert.org. They are the people that asked for the information and finally got it. Shows the incidence, 36 percent of the white children have dental fluorosis. That would be added in to 58 percent of the black children have dental fluorosis. Now, Lutryon covered this from the EPA last week with fluoride listed as a neurotoxin. And also earlier this year, a Lancet study referred to it as a neurotoxin. And then this right here is the level that it has been reduced from 2010 at the high point, 1.1 to dash 1.2 as the high, down to 0.54 to dash to 0.64. So they really reduced the fluoride. So my only question is to you, hopefully the people out there, is who do you believe? I'm not going to tell you it's safe. I'm just going to try to give you the information that is online that you can get for yourself. And just remember, when you vote, you got one week to do it. Early voting is still going on till noon the day before, on Monday. You have the opportunity to use your power to send these people here a message, just as you can send the people to Pika a message, or Washington DC, is that if you get out, your vote counts. Do not waste it. Please be informed. Anybody that don't know very much about fluoride, look on the back of your toothpaste container. The first thing under drug warning or drug fax is going to be, do not swallow. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Allison Rikoff. My office address is 700 South Front Street, and I wanted to come today to address the fluoride issue. I've been hearing a lot of things in the community, how it's a conspiracy from, why are all the dentists for fluoride? And it's a big conspiracy, and we're getting a kickback from the fluoride industry, and I just kind of want to address that. There is no kickback, and it's not a conspiracy. We've read the research, we've read the studies. You don't get out of dental school without reading the research and reading the studies on fluoride. This is, this is what we do. And I think it impacts us more than even the medical community in that, you know, when we, when we have the children laying in our chair, we're the ones holding their hands, giving them shots, pulling their teeth, or sewing up holes in their jaw where the bone has been eroded through by infection. Dental carries and cavities in this country is at an epidemic level. It's classified as an epidemic in this country. And reducing or taking the fluoride out of the water will just increase that problem. So I worked in Kansas City in a community that was non-fluoridated, and I kind of worked in, on a county line, and it was always kind of a joke to us, oh, we're seeing a kid and doing 15 fillings here, what, oh, they're from, we know where they're from. So it does make a difference, and that's anecdotal, but that's, that's the experience that I have. I've, I've worked in a non-fluoridated community, and I've worked in a fluoridated community, and there is a difference. We see the difference. And I think that it impacts us because we are holding those kids' hands, we are pulling those teeth, we're sewing up jaws that have been eroded away. We're, I'm a mom of three kids, too. This affects my kids, and if I thought this was dangerous for my kids in reading the research, I'd be the first one to step up and say, I don't want my kids drinking that. I, I've read the research, and it is junk science that is promoting taking the fluoride out of the water. There's nothing substantial, there's nothing that's reputable that states that the fluoride is, is dangerous. And the fluoride has been researched and researched and researched, and all the reputable research says it's safe, it's effective, and we should have it in the water. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Cindy Reed. I am an orthodontist practicing in Salina for the last 23 years. I've been reviewing the posts from the Anti-Fluoride Group. This week, the Salina Careers posted the following link with a picture of an unborn fetus to catch your eye, and this is what it captured. Scientists link autism to these toxic chemicals during fetal development. Most people would not bother to read the literature, but I clicked on the link. Not once in that article was fluoride mentioned, not one time. It talked about other things in our environment, but never fluoride. But these, this group wants to use that as a scare tactic and propaganda to get people to come to their side, which is the conspiracy side. Have you noticed that the Anti-Fluoride Group has not mentioned the Harvard Study lately? Well, that's because, the truth is, that was a review of literature. That actually even wasn't a study. And the review actually states that the reviewed studies were extremely incomplete. Fluoride is safe and effective. Three deans of the Harvard Medical School, the Harvard Dental School, and the Harvard School of Public Health agree that water fluoridation is effective and safe. It is a public health measure for all people of all ages. And I have a letter here with all three signatures dated within, was dated March of 2013, promoting fluoride for all of our communities. It actually says that 204 million Americans living in fluoridated communities having access to the health and economic benefits of this vital public health measure. I think that these deans of Harvard Medical, Dental, and Public Health Services might actually really understand and know something that somebody just reading the internet maybe not know. The Anti-Fluoride Group puts out some very scary and exaggerated information. For example, the article that they just handed, my husband, Dr. Alan Reed, the level of fluoride was from a well at 150 parts per million. Salina water is 0.7 parts per million. There's a huge difference there. We have had many conversations with this group. They have sent us many links to studies that they think are for their side, but when we click on them and read them, they're actually for our side. They show that all of the studies that they have sent us, either one, you have to pay to see the link, or two, the levels of fluoride are extremely high, or they have not accounted for lead, arsenic, and air pollution in the study, and it is not a valid study therefore. Yes, we know fluoride is toxic. We also know that a jar of vitamins is toxic. Doesn't make vitamins bad. Salt, iodine, water, about any other substance that you name can be toxic in large doses. Yes, fluoride is mined from the earth like other substances like phosphorus. And yes, some of these are used for fertilizers, but that does not make fluoride a bad thing. Our water, as matter of fact, is checked every day for our levels of fluoride, and lead, and arsenic. Our city reports these numbers, and they keep the levels of fluoride at 0.7 parts per million. The Anti-Fluoride Group claimed that the fluoride is laced with lead and arsenic, so our city let them take their own samples from our sacks of fluoride and have them analyzed. The test did not show what they wanted. Isn't that amazing? Even if it was contaminated, our water department tests the water every day for lead and arsenic. They would know this. There is absolutely no evidence that a person has ever been harmed by 0.7 parts per million of fluoride. You know Wichita does not add fluoride to their water supply, and they have double the decay rate in grade school kids. Last week, one of the leaders of the Anti-Fluoride Group told me that's because they have more kids and more poor kids. Well, that's just an example of how they don't quite understand. They are good people. No, don't miss me, no doubt about that. But the decay is reported from dental screenings that we do when we go into the schools, and we report those numbers to the state. It's based off the percentage of kids with decay, not the number of kids. And did you know that this last year, Salina had more kids on free and reduced lunch than Wichita did? So I don't think that we can say it's because on a percentage-wise that they have more children that are poor. There are other cities that have compared fluoride being added to the water and fluoride not added to the water. The decay rate on these comparisons is consistently double when socioeconomic factors are considered. This happens because fluoride is incorporated into the tooth while the tooth is being formed. Topical fluoride is only added to the surface of the tooth. This is a big difference in protection. The Anti-Fluoride Group states that it is expensive to add fluoride to the water, and we should spend that money on promoting dental health. Well, last year, Salina spent $10,000 on fluoride. Based off 50,000 people drinking water in Salina, that cost is 20 cents per person. I can't even send one health promotional literature out for 20 cents per person. 80 percent of all decay is found in children on state assistance or no insurance. The very children that have the very least ability to help themselves. Wouldn't it be sad to allow their decay rate to double right here in my hometown? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Doesn't have to be on fluoride, you can talk about something else if you want.[1734.83][1734.83](Laughter) Okay. Appreciate you all coming out and giving your thoughts on these different issues. I know this is sometimes a hard time to make it in the day, so I appreciate you making the effort to come out and share your thoughts with us. That moves us on to the consent agenda, which is the reason you're really all here.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of October 20, 2014. Item 6.2, authorize the Mayor to sign the Construction Observation Services Agreement with Schwab Eaton for the Water Tower Maintenance City Project Number 14-3037 with a not-to-exceed amount of $49,286.
Is there an item on the consent agenda a Commissioner would like removed or amended? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on to administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 14-7146, demonstrating governing body's support for the downtown fieldhouse proposal and directing staff to commence...
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have 16 pages in my report and I will try not to put you into a coma here. But what I'll try to do is really highlight the main elements of this and then you'll get an opportunity to hear from a lot of other folks and then certainly can ask whatever questions you may have of staff or whomever you need to. First, I want to talk a little bit about the kind of historical community needs. At least in the modern area since the 1980s, there's been talk about need for indoor recreation space. And at one point in the late 80s, 1987 roughly, the city received a feasibility report from Key and Company about a full recreation type center facility. And that's different from what we're talking about today. But at that time, there was need for indoor space, but that obviously is a full recreation center, brought in some other aspects and services that were provided already by the current YMCA. And so, the community and governing body felt the YMCA was doing what they needed to do, and I think that's been proven today. So there wasn't any movement forward with that particular facility concept. If you fast forward in 2004, the YWCA building, a smaller facility, closed and there was some interest at that time by the city and the Parks and Recreation Department to review that for indoor needs. Again, really probably didn't, wouldn't have met all the, well, wouldn't have met all the indoor needs we have in our community and had some other aspects that we probably didn't need. And so the city at that point didn't move forward, but that was a reminder of the need for the indoor court space that we're talking about today. It's really difficult to fully quantify that demand for indoor court space, but we've had, our staff has had many conversations with the folks who actually have kids that participate in activities with coaches and so forth. And it is, I'm not going to bore you to death because you've heard all this, but it is difficult to find court space for adequate practice times without going late into the evening and especially if you want to practice more than once a week. And this is, when we're talking about this, we're talking not just Parks and Rec, but YMCA and other functions. So it has been a challenge and I think most folks that are involved in that would tell you that, and particularly the coaches who have to schedule those things. So let's talk about the origination of the downtown field house concept. And it is a different concept. We were first approached in 2012, but quite honestly, those who had started seeing the need from our community started talking in 2010. So there's been about four years worth of conversations with regards to this type of need. That group was loosely, sort of a loose group at first and then sort of organized themselves and included the YMCA Downtown, Salina Downtown Inc. business owners and brought in Salina, City of Salina through the Parks and Rec Department to be a partner in reviewing. Really, could Salina benefit from an indoor facility? What type of facility? And really to raise all the questions and get answers. What they tried to do is really evaluate community needs, potential uses, potential economic impact, community partners, and just about all those questions that would come up with regards to a facility. Much of the information was garnered from the result of those who did have to travel. You know, we talk about, people say, kids rule the world. Now, I think kids do rule the world compared to when I was a kid, but that's a good thing because in essence, what we're really talking about are parents that want to find the opportunities for their kids and explore those opportunities. And there are a lot of means to do that and athletics is one of those ways. And so for those that are taking their kids, involving their kids, involving them in competitive play particularly, they travel and they see these other facilities. And so they're really looking at what types of activities can you hold in these facilities? How large is the facility? How do they schedule these things? And so they looked at a lot of these questions. And the conclusion is they felt that Salina did have a lack of available indoor athletic space that not only was an issue for practices, as we mentioned, but also caused a lot of the sports-oriented families to have to travel outside of the community more than they would really like to. And I can't say that you would eliminate that altogether because you wouldn't, but I think the more than they liked to is the key point. So we fast forward again into the basic downtown concept. Basically, from the travels, from all the discussions and the research, they decided that it would be nice if Salina had that type of facility to take care of those needs. They looked at hard surface space for sport courts like basketball and volleyball, and also a large turf area, which is a different thing. The idea of bringing outdoor sports, at least in some form or fashion, indoors during the off-season, sometimes during the regular season for practices and for other competitive aspects. And as they really started looking at that, they were able to leverage some financial assistance from the Chamber of Commerce and Salina Downtown Inc. that allowed them to do some feasibility planning with Jones Gillimren's architects that are locally in town. And they really came to the conclusion of a 70,000 square foot facility. And a real conceptual estimate, just based on conceptual review, of about $9 million for that facility. The other thing that they knew is they knew that Salina is built and has been built on public-private partnerships. There are so many examples when we really look across our community with our community theater, the Arts Center, Dean Evans Stadium, the Fox Watson Stiefel Theater, the first tee golf course, the Salina Soccer Complex, Salina Stadium, Smoky Hill Museum, the Eric Stein Stage, the Sunset Park War Memorial, and there are many others. So we're really a community that, in my opinion, has very successfully leveraged public-private partnerships when the time is right to do that. A lot of other communities aren't able to do that as well as Salina. And that's one of the things I think I've been most impressed about Salina. And so when they looked at this indoor field house type concept, of course, the first thing is, well, how much money can be raised? Can it be done privately? Are we looking at a public-private partnership? It kind of caused them to start thinking about location and look to the downtown. As a city, we've been focusing a lot on the core as governing body members, you have as well. And the core seemed to be, for whatever reason, a theme for this group. And they said downtown, it needs this facility and the facility would be a good fit downtown. So they looked at the, what we call the former Phoenix property. And to everyone's surprise, local property developer Brian Richardson was able to actually acquire that property. Quite honestly, I would have bet against that, but he did a good job. He was able to get that. And in essence, it offered an opportunity that we didn't have before downtown. So when we talk about the vision again, it started about four years ago, but more of a material structure for this idea really happened about 18 months ago in April of 2013. The group sort of formed an investment group when they started thinking about private dollars and private commitments and had been working really hard to gather those. And there's significant commitments already for this type of a project in our community. So there's a step. It's more than just a vision. We have an idea and now we need to go talk to people. They have talked to people and really been able to move this forward. So after four years of that visioning, observing, and planning, they have kind of settled in on the $9 million, 70,000 square foot facility. But I'd say that's a concept at this point. There's nothing that's locked in stone from the city's perspective. They initially felt the maximum private dollars that could be raised would be somewhere in the $3 million area. But I think after conversations with you, talking to the community, they feel that it's worth a stretch to try to get to the 50/50 type number. And that's, again, assuming a 9 million facility. It could be less than that, we don't know. But based on that, you know, the 50% of them, 4.5 million, 50% public dollars, 4.5 million, which increases the leveraging ability for the private dollars more. And for that matter, it really provides a real opportunity for everyone if we feel as a city that we agree and the timing's right and needs are there. And I think that's why we're here. The community group's been very transparent. They've been out in the public. They've been trying to educate, provided a lot of information to us, and it's been very helpful. I'm not going to go through the specific timeline. It's in your report, but it does kind of give you some kind of time milestones with regards to the project and project discussions. It comes to the key decision points. We really, and these are things that you've heard before, but when it came down to it, we look at really seven key decision points. The facility type, some of these are easier than others. We think the facility type's pretty easy. And I'll hit each of these pretty quickly. The facility location, the operating model, the ownership and operating responsibility, the operating costs. Not as much a decision, but it does relate to the operating model and it's important. The public-private cost allocation and project financing. When we look at the facility type, we've talked a little bit about a recreation center. And if we were looking at a full recreation center with pool and weights and cardio equipment and all that, we would certainly be competing and really don't feel there's a need to do that in our community. We have a really, really good YMCA and we have private facilities as well. So that's why it took us back to, the real needs seem to be the indoor type field house type use with the courts, the typical indoor stuff, and the more of the external field type activities brought inside. So the recommended facility type is certainly what we call a field house facility. So it is not, you heard of the term rec center quite often. It's not really a rec center, but it is a, certainly there'll be recreation that occurs inside if it's constructed. The facility location, obviously, the initial thought was put it downtown, look at the Phoenix property. But from a staff perspective, we said, makes sense and it's great to start from there. But if you're talking about any significant private dollars, you really need to go through a process to make sure at the end you're comfortable with that location for a lot of reasons. So our staff conducted a review and kind of put together, called it a rubric, and looked at facility utilization, the economic impact, planning, and public interest. And did find that that location did score higher than the others. But quite honestly, what it came down to is it depends who the audience is and what you want to do with the facility. And what I mean by that is, is that if the audience are those that come from out of the community, outside the community, stay in the hotels, shop, and dine, you would actually take it to South Salina because that's where most of that is. If it's about just access, you would be sure and keep it on one of our most busy arterial roadways, wherever you'd like to be in a community or right off an interstate. If it's the economic impact and you want to target that, certainly the core is a great place to do that. And so when you really think about it, that's why we believe as a staff that the location being the core makes some sense is, you're not going to get all of that economic impact. There will still be folks that, you know, maybe staying in a hotel in the south end and will take their money, you know, outside the core. And that's okay too. That's what choice is about. But having it there, that's a first option, a first ride of refusal. So it gives us an opportunity, especially during the tournament-type weekends, to try to keep some of that impact in the downtown and continue to bolster our downtown and kind of get the wheels starting to roll on some exciting things. I will say too, excuse me, the YMCA site was one of those sites. And we looked at, we looked at the Lee Building site, which was not necessarily yet available for that, but we still wanted to look at that. The old municipal pool site, the YMCA site in a southern located USD 305 site. The YMCA site was pulled. We had pretty good conversations with the Y and quite honestly, they're really short on outdoor space and they needed to preserve that. But they certainly communicated a real interest in an operating arrangement with us. And so that's the most important aspect of it. And so that's certainly something that would be part of this as we move forward. Really, three operating models that we looked at. A pure program-only model is one, the open-use model, and then a sort of a hybrid approach. Under the purely program model, it would be for organized teams only for practice or for tournaments coming in. Whereas an open-use model is one of those, kind of like a rec center, you open in the morning sometime, close in the evening, and anybody can come in and use it at any time. When we looked at those, the pure program model did meet some of the needs and primarily some of the major considerations. We didn't want that to compete with existing community programs and organizations. That's pretty easy. It's not an open-use model. Cost-effective operational bottom line, probably the easiest way to predict that is with that model. Reasonable user fees. We want to be good partners and have the facility actually used. An aggressive but realistic tournament scheduling and off-peak and on-peak usage times offered to alternate groups. Try to fill it when you can with those groups that want to utilize it. And very limited or no open use of the facility at all. And we thought about that. You could do that, but when you're talking about tax dollars into that, it really seems to sort of be counterintuitive to the use of tax dollars and the use by the general public. So I'll skip to the open-use model. Some of the considerations with the open-use model is that we could find ourselves with the scheduling and the open court space competing with local facilities more than we would like to, we really wouldn't like to at all, but it could be fairly significant. And I've often given my own example of that. What people do is they look at those types of things that they want to participate in at a rec center or whatever the facility is, and then sometimes they'll look at the quality, they'll look at the cost, and then they'll figure out the best option for them. And if you open up the hours from the very early morning to the very late evening, it's very possible you could pull folks away if they have limited usage. Maybe it's basketball, for example. Obviously, that's a common sport in town and it'd be offered with courts. And so you could pull people away if we offer things that are already offered. So we felt that was too much to the extreme in the open use and felt that the best model is what we call a hybrid model. And in the hybrid model, we would have the programmed use, as we talked about, for tournaments and practices and so forth. There would be times allowing for public use and access by the entire community. We're not, don't get caught up in the time. That needs to be worked out in concept further. The idea is, is that it provides adequate opportunity for that, but doesn't get to the point of significantly impacting or harming another entity that already offers that. And quite honestly, I think that can be handled in a partnership approach that we'll talk about. Reasonable user fees, still a factor here. Same thing with tournament scheduling and so forth. So we think we can balance with the hybrid model. And we do believe the hybrid model still gives us a really good opportunity to have an efficient use of the facility and maximize the space and usage and also to pretty accurately predict operational costs. And when you have a 70,000 square foot facility, your operational costs are a pretty big factor in the future. So we believe that the hybrid model can kind of meet all the needs as well as any possible model and allow us to be able to control the finances. And that's really important when we think about the future impact. So staff recommends if you should go forward with this partnership, the hybrid model. From an ownership and operating responsibility, we really looked at a lot of options. You could have private ownership, you could have nonprofit, you could have public. And quite honestly, one of the things we felt is when you're looking at this type of, in significance and amount of tax dollars, ownership by the city probably is the best thing. And so we're recommending city ownership in this and believe that's the best approach. With regards to operating responsibility, the staff recommends that the city be in essence the lead operator. And what I mean by that is it's our responsibility. What that could mean though, is it could mean that we have agreements with, it could be the school district, could be colleges, could be YMCA, could be others. And at some point, if we should choose and feel that some form of a privatized operation or a full operation from another entity under contract with us, such as what we do at the bicentennial center, if we find that's the best approach, we could do that too. So you have all the flexibility with regards to that. But the focus right now is partnerships with regards to operations and that community utilization. So that's why we're leaning towards that and believe that's reasonable. Kind of leads into operating costs. We always worry about our other expenses. The operating expense is going to far exceed the revenues and create a huge deficit situation. And that can happen. With certain full recreation centers, that can happen. And so we certainly want to avoid that. So, but we do believe with the defined hours of operation to a degree and aggressive, we really need an aggressive approach to tournaments and practices and so forth and really fill it with practices and bring those weekend tournaments to town. Quite honestly, that's going to take some help from some others. We're going to work it, we'll work it through Parks and Recreation, but that's a community effort as well. And we have to consistently be pushing ourselves to do that because, quite honestly, those other communities that have those tournaments want to keep them. So we have to go after those and we have to think about the competitive aspect and we have to create tournaments and do that. And we think we have a good facility and we can do some of that. So we're pretty confident we can meet the goals. But when we looked at this, the Parks and Rec Department did estimating and they, I really asked them to be ultra-conservative with this, even more conservative than some of the prior estimates that had been done in the community. And so really what came out of that is total revenues, and I looked at it over the first three years, of about $410,000 the first year, roughly $454,000 the second year, and about $490,000 the third year. And quite honestly, those are estimates. That's as good as they are. But expenses starting ranging about $483,000 the first year through about $512,000 in year three. And so we showed a difference of about minus $73,000 the first year diminishing in time as we do a better job of getting our tournaments locked up and so forth to about $22,000 in year three. And again, those are considered to be really conservative. The private estimates that were provided before suggest that it could be a break even. And there are certain facilities that operationally get pretty close and actually exceed and do break even. But quite honestly, I don't want to come here and say, well, we're going to break even for sure and you don't have to worry about that. We want to just be realistic and if we do a good job, we know we can probably try to get you there. So that's what we're projecting, but it could be better than that. And it could be worse. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It could be worse. But that's where I believe the hybrid model protects us. If it was an open rec model, I would be more concerned, but with the hybrid model, we have more control over that. And so I think that's very helpful. You can see some of the other facilities in your report. I won't go through all of this, but we have Field House in Shawnee, we have Lawrence's, Lawrence has a brand-new facility that's just opening, Kansas City, Grand Island. And it gives you an idea to sort of compare. And some of those are larger, some of those are older, a difference in a lot of ways, but just gives you an idea where they end up with their cost recovery. And that's probably as good information as we can garner out there for that. The public-private cost allocation of the facility. We talked about the total being a $9 million project. We believe that there's probably close to $2 million that's been already raised from public or private donations and pledges, which is really a great head start if you should move forward with this. Those come from various aspects of our community, from foundations, private companies, and citizens. Again, the initial proposal was, out of the $9 million, was $6 million in public funds and $3 million in private. But the private investment group really, they listen to you and feel that they can try to stretch and try to meet you halfway at 50/50. So that's what they're trying to do. And again, that's 4.5 million for each party. Some of the examples of other private-public partnerships we've had in our community, the Salina Soccer Complex was a total of just over a couple million dollars and the city put in just almost 1.1 million with private being just a little over 900,000. So the private funds was about 46%. The Salina Soccer Complex was a total of just over a couple million dollars, and the city put in just almost 1.1 million with private being just a little over $900,000, so the private funds was about 46%. The first tee course, total investment was about $600,000. City investment was about 400, and private investment about 200. But that includes, the cities includes some additional grant funds, and that part of that was a facility, kind of moving around facilities in order to deal with the, the lessons and so forth. So about 33% private funds for the whole package, not just the course. Dean Evans Stadium was about 50%, 50/50, it was pretty close. Fox Watson-Stiefel Theater, about 85% private funds. It was not a facility, it was owned by the, by the city at one time to protect it, but today, it's not owned by the city any longer. And of course, this Salina Field House is, is to be at 50/50. Staff recommends that if you should go forward with this, that you would certainly want to have a 50/50 relationship and not a 60, a 30 or anything like that. Project financing, the payment tool. The MAC, MAC, well, based on the, I guess the cap of $9 million and 4.5 each, the maximum amount you'd be expected to finance would be 4.5 million. So keep that in mind. It's a little different than $6 million before. There are really three options. Pay-as-you-go in cash. Pay-as-you-go is really tough, because we don't have cash right now to do it today, so we would have to save up in time, and in all likelihood, you'd need a sales tax renewal to start saving, so you're, you're really saving way out into the future. And what happens is, is communities are interesting. People move in, people move out. People pass away, people are born. And what happens is, a lot of times when you're raising dollars for something, if you're going to really, truly save up, and it takes you a long period of time, 10, 15, 20 years, by the time you save up and you, and you fund that facility, you feel pretty good because you did in cash. But the problem is, is a lot of people gave to it aren't in your community anymore, and they don't get to reap the, the benefit or the reward of that facility. So, if you have, if you can get low interest rates, and if you can make sure the financing fits into your operational pro forma with regards to the debt service, the financing does allow folks who are contributing through the tax dollars to benefit at the time, after the facility's up and running, but at the time that the debt's being paid off. So there's a little bit of a, a benefit to that, but I wouldn't recommend it unless the financial terms are, are good, and today, they still are pretty competitive, and that's a positive for us. So that leads to some options. With financing, you could go, we don't do lease purchases in Kansas, because we have the authority to, to use GEO bonds, general obligation bonds, pretty openly. And so, the city of Salina usually uses general obligation bonds, and we find that that's the best financing approach. I, I just put lease purchase because it is an option in communities, but usually it includes higher fees, and it's more attractive in a, in a state like Missouri where you have to vote on everything, or Oklahoma for that matter. So with the city, we have a habit, and have for years, of our, our debts issued through general obligation bonds. That's a, for the most part, that's a discretion held by the city commission authorized that. And quite honestly, it's a pretty simple process of looking at the project. You would have already had a project and project need determined. You would have agreed on the solution of the project. Doesn't have to be this one. You would have said, "Yeah, we agree with GEO bonds, get a good interest rate, look at our debt service payments, make sure they fit into our operating costs, so they don't tilt our budget the wrong way," and then we move forward. And we do this typically with water and sewer projects and street projects pretty often. So it's a common tool that we use annually. We've estimated that on the 4.5 million amount, that over a 20-year period with a 3% interest rate, the annual debt service payments, just a, a little over $302,000. So it gives you an idea of what the annual impact is with that type of cost. And so, you have the option of property taxes, which that's equivalent to what you consider to be a 3/4 mill impact, if you want to convert it to the millage, or future special sales tax proceeds. The, the current special purpose sales tax is 0.4%, and it was approved by the voters in 2008 for capital improvements, major equipment, economic development, and property tax stabilization. And I think, I think you've done a pretty good job with that. So, in the 10-year, tax generates approximately $4.8 million per year and expires in March of 2019. So you have an existing tax that's there, and then you have, what's really a question for a different day, but is a renewal question between sometime now and 2019. And if you don't have that, you're going to lose about $1.5 million to $2 million in street investment, capital equipment, and some other issues. So, that's a pretty important sales tax. If that tax is renewed, it, as you can see, can easily absorb a $302,000 debt service payment. But I think the key is, is you don't know that it's going to be renewed, and you can't presume that. You can plan and say, "Well, okay, that's the ideal source of funds to pay the debt service if it's available." And the question is if, but if it's not, we strongly recommend that you have a Plan B in place for that. And so, I think if you go into it, you have to consider that you need to have a Plan B, and you'd ask staff to develop a financial Plan B for you. That very well could include the property tax. There's no question, it could do that. But, so anyway, that sort of lines out the, the two opportunities that you have. It's property or sales tax. You prefer that special sales tax in the future, but if for some reason that's not in place in the time that you need it, then you have to, you're going to have to rely probably on the property tax at that point in time. We'll talk a little bit about timing. There's a little bit of timing in there, but we'll talk about that here in just a, just a moment. From a debt perspective, as I mentioned, you generally have a lot of authority to issue general obligation bonds. There are certain exceptions. We have used some other financing tools like revolving loan funds, where we use those for utilities, and usually, we're talking about $2 to $4 million per year in that, to give you an idea of that level. Another project, too, the North Ohio Overpass, was a total of about a 20, $18 to $20 million project, when you look at all facets of it, the bridge and some other things. That was a fairly, well, very large project for the city of Salina. Typically, in street work, we'll spend, oh, you know, a project like a South Ohio, a South Knight Street, East Magnolia, some of our larger projects, you'll spend anywhere usually from about $2 to $5 million, to give you an idea of those as well. Currently, you have a chart, what's called a charter ordinance, and, and the quickest explanation of a charter ordinance is that in Kansas, if there are laws that are not uniformly applied to all cities, cities can charter out and do something differently. If a law is uniformly applied to all cities, you're stuck with that law. And so, with the debt issuance, it's definitely non-uniform, and so we have a charter ordinance that's been amended multiple times in the past few, quite a few years ago. Charter ordinance number 34. And quite honestly, we don't do a lot of building projects, so we haven't looked at this in a while, but the limit for buildings is $1 million of, of the debt issuance. And what that means is, is you have two options under the charter ordinance. You could initially take the issue to a public vote, which would likely occur this, next spring in 2015, because 4.5 million is obviously more than 1 million, for those of us that do math on a regular basis. So, that's one option. The, the other option is, is you have the discretion to amend a charter ordinance and still provide opportunity for the electorate to weigh in if they should choose. And what I mean by that is, is if you amend a charter ordinance, which the city commissioners have done before, Kenwood Cove is an example of that. But if you amend the charter ordinance, there is, once you get past first and second reading and the publication, there's a 61-day, in essence, protest period. If the electorate wants to gather petition signatures to place that action on the ballot, they're able to do that. So either option, and if they do place it on the ballot, if it was in this particular case, it'd probably take you to the same spring election. If not, then you could begin to move on this project within 60 days versus another three months beyond, at least, well, three to four months beyond that, probably four months by the time you're done. So there's an impact of the timing. So you really have a choice with regards to the debt. If you should move forward with the project, if you look at general obligation bonds, which should be recommended, you have a choice to just send it to a vote, which typically you wouldn't do with most of your debt issuance, just because you don't need to, or amend the charter ordinance and recognize that the electorate still has an opportunity to participate if they want to do that, if they're not, not happy with that decision. Staff believes that given electorate has a protected petition path to address a charter ordinance, the debt issuance is a little, is less than really previously expected with the, with the 50/50 versus the 70/30 type approach, and that most typically, you're used to dealing with debt decisions and working with the finance, with staff and finance department with your, with the operating pro formas, that amending the charter ordinance is, in that aspect of it, it's really not risky or, or something that's, that would be a problem from a, from a financial perspective. That's something that you could do, and I think would feel good about, because it does cover all those bases. So staff would recommend, when we look at this, for those reasons, that you would look at amending the charter ordinance if you should choose to move forward. And again, all these aspects we break down are if you should choose, and, and I will tell you, and I'll tell you again later, we're, staff, this is one of those pure policy things where you get to decide if you think that it's the right time, the right project, and so forth. And yeah, if you ask staff, we could tell you our thoughts and opinions and so forth, but our job is really to staff through it and give you the information you need to make that decision. So, my recommendation isn't based on you should or shouldn't do that, because I could, I could give you reasons on both sides if I really wanted to, but it's more to give you a package of if you should decide to go forward, we can recommend the right package, what we think is the right package or a prudent package to go forward. So that's what we'll do. So, a couple other project considerations. The project administration. You are used as a governing body to administering and having staff on your behalf administer your capital improvement projects. We feel there's agreement that that can happen in this case and makes sense. That takes you all the way from the beginning of the design, selection of the designer and the design, and the process you want to use for construction and so forth, all the way through from beginning to end, that a project would, would be just like any other capital improvement project. In addition to that, one of the things that we've really tried to emphasize is community engagement, and a project of this magnitude definitely needs some community engagement when we try to look at final details and things. So certainly, staff recognizes we'd be expected to continue to work closely with the investor group and community group. That's already done a lot of work for this, and also with the citizens at large, as this, if you go forward, as it becomes a real picture and a real plan and a real project. So, that's something that we would be expected to do, but certainly would want to retain for you the project administration authority. Project timeline. The project timeline is, is pretty interesting. I'm going to, I'm going to flip over here. I'm going to have to hit a quick button here. We'll see how, how good I am with this.
While he's doing that, there are several people back there that could sit down.
Yeah, there are some seats out front, if y'all see him up here.
Okay. What we, what we've given you is-
Front row seats.
Yeah. Our, our deputy city manager has, has put together a really nice Gantt chart to talk about timeline. It'll help you visually. We've talked about, and it shows in each year, '14, '15, '16, and beyond, and, but honestly, it cuts off on mine for some reason on my iPad, but you have key milestones. The first milestone is if you should decide today, conceptually, to move forward with it, and that's what you'd be doing. You'd be making a, not a formal legal commitment, but a conceptual commitment that says, "We agree with the partnership, we agree with the project, and we want to move forward." And you'd then ask staff to start working on the, working with the property owner on the property, and also working with regards to a, probably a development agreement or memorandum of understanding, depending on the, how formalized the group we're working with is or becomes. But there's some key milestones. The first, obviously, is a charter ordinance protest period, because that tells you at what point you're free to move to the next step in the project. If there's a protest, if it's significant enough to create the, the petition as the signatures to send it to a vote, then we're waiting till spring. If not, you could move forward probably pretty close to the end of the year of the next step. The next step would be the development agreement, and so some of this can happen concurrently. If you amend the charter ordinance, we can start working on the, the pieces of the property in the development agreement. We can't bring them to you yet, because you need to let that time expire, but after that time's expired, we can be ready then to have you address those items, and that would be our attempt to do that, and that's a pretty key milestone. The, the private investment group would then need to secure the design, enough private funds to deal with design and property acquisition. And if those could be handled with private funds early on, you're still not obligated with public funds to date. Okay? So that's a real key as well, because what's, what that's doing is, is we're, we're, when we look at the timing of the project, it causes us not to have to issue debt any earlier than we need to with this project. And so, that really takes us into about March, middle of March of 2015, we estimate. And these are just estimates. So at that time, if the, if the design is, and acquisition funds are in place, the property acquisition can occur, the architectural, whatever process is used can occur, and the final fundraising effort can occur. And staff would recommend, as a conservative financial approach, that you would, the next step would be, once the, once the design is complete, and once the private funds are raised and in hand, I think that's a key, too. They really need to be in hand for you, because at that point, you know that they are there, and there's no guess as to whether the $4.5 million amount can be hit. So once they're in hand, then you'd be ready to authorize a construction contract. And so, again, you could decide on the process, whether it's design, bid, build, whether it's a construction manager-at-risk process, or whatever that is, that would be your discretion. Could choose that process. We could enter into a contract knowing that the private funds are in hand, that all the terms of the development agreement have been met, and you can feel comfortable at that point in time. And we would expect that that would occur if we can stay on the timeline about, that would start the construction, could, well, the procurement for the construction should start about March of 2016, presuming the construction could start about, somewhere in May, about middle of 2016. The project will take a little while to complete, so we're probably looking at somewhere in 2017 before it's finished, spring, probably middle of 2017, somewhere in there. There'll be then time to equip it and get it ready for opening and so forth. And so, the doors probably don't open until mid to late 2017, when we look at the timeline. And so, with really what could be just about as fast a process as we could use doing certain steps concurrently, that's as quickly as you could actually open it up, we believe, for use in the community. And so, that's why when somebody looks at these projects, they say, "Oh, I can't believe it takes so long." Well, it does. We'll try to speed it up as much as we could, but it still takes quite a long time. So anything that creates delay in that is actually going to, could push you out even further, because what happens is, is if you don't get a project like that started early enough before winter, you, you may not be far enough with the progress as winter hits, and that would be a real problem. So that causes a decision that if we think early on, there's going to be significant delay in the starting time, that we may force us to the next year's spring as a start date. And, and so, a couple of months delay could actually be, two or three months delay could be more like six or eight months delay in reality, to avoid the winter season impact to that. So, that's also something to keep in consideration. Just about to finish up here. When we looked at all of this, again, our job was to really put together this information for you and report it to you, not to tell you what to do. That's not what our job really is. That's, that's everybody else's job when you're elected, I suppose. But I think the key things is, is that, I won't go over the fiscal note again, it's the same thing we just talked about, but will it, will it conform with the strategic plan? Yeah, a lot of things do. I think certainly it does. You're focusing on the core and the downtown area, that's part of your strategic plan. You're focusing on the quality of services and so forth. So it definitely conforms with your vision and some of the things you want to do. The alternatives, alternatives and recommendation, the, and again, these alternatives, it's really pretty easy. One, and, and it's included in your resolution, we have resolution number 14-7146, and demonstrating that the governing body, we use the word support, you can, you can modify that if you're not comfortable with it, but support the partnership for the downtown field house proposal, direct staff to commence formal conversations with the property owner and private investment group to address the property acquisition, and creation of a project development agreement, or it could be a memorandum of understanding, with the following package general provisions. And as we mentioned, the basic concept is a multipurpose field house, approximately what's been presented, final design will dictate that, at the Fifth and Iron, former Phoenix development site location. And if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. Just to give you an idea, and we talk about that, that's what that site used to look like, and it wasn't very appealing, and I think that's what drew a lot of attention to it. You can go ahead and go to the next one, Deion. We'll just leave you with that. It's kind of a, that's a concept provided to us that shows you kind of what it could look like, and, and that's a, I will say, that's a different topic from dealing with the indoor recreation need, but it is nice to be able to visualize that, and you kind of have an idea of the draft schematic of the layout of the, of the facility. the layout of the facility. So the location, Fifth and Iron, the operating model being a hybrid model that provides both competitive and program use and also open use with partnership agreements, ownership by the city, the primary operating responsibility with the city, recognizing, again, the need for partnerships, the operating cost to be, the goal is to break even or better. There's no question. The goal is break even or better. That's what we try to do. We just want to be conservative with our estimates. Private-public cost allocation of the $9 million, split 50/50. We would expect that if it's an $8 million project, it's split 50/50 unless you wanted to do something different. We're not saying it has to be nine. It's an estimate at this point in time. Certainly, I would expect you're probably looking at it not to exceed at this point. The project financing using geo bonds and amending the charter ordinance to utilize a 61-day petition timeframe that allows the electorate to be involved if they should choose to do that. Project administration, remain the sole authority of the city, with an expectation to engage the community investor group and the public at large as we need to do. Project timeline, as we indicated in the Gantt chart, try to accelerate that if you want us to move forward as quickly as possible, but I think that's fairly realistic if things go pretty smoothly. And then utilize the development agreement or memorandum of understanding to basically codify all this, all the responsibilities, the roles, decision milestones, the fundraising expectations, project administration. I'm sorry, I have typed, I have that in there twice. I guess I wanted to emphasize that. But to emphasize all those things and provide clarity, so there's no confusion going forward. And one of the things that I think I'd indicated to you before is that this type of a project has a lot of little things in there as well as big things, and not to worry about sweating the little stuff. That's what we will, as your staff would work out for you if you want to move forward, we'll deal with the details and the little stuff to make sure that before anything comes to you and before you're obligated, that all the expectations are met. Otherwise, you don't have to move forward. It's really that simple. So the other option is to, if you wanted to express support for the partnership and move forward with some different options or direction, certainly that's an available option. And finally, of course, if you should choose, you don't feel for whatever reason the timing, the price, whatever it might be, that it's not the right time, you have an option certainly to choose not to, want to enter into this and move forward at this time. So that's a long report on a big issue. I'm available, as well as our Parks and Recreation Director, Dion Louthen, to answer questions. And there may be others that, I know there are others that are probably wanting to speak with you, and you can think about how you want to do that. At least when it comes back to you as you start to whittle through this, it might be good to just take it with those key decision points one at a time. It might be helpful for you to do that, and we'll be happy to respond in any way that you need us to.
Great. Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for staff, or do you want to kind of change the order around? How do y'all want to go about it?
I'm going to have questions, but I can wait.
I think due to the overwhelming size of the crowd, I think it'd be good to hear from the applicant and anybody that would wish to speak, and then we can kind of get into the weeds a little bit following that, if that works for all of us.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where I was heading. I think it makes sense. So let's do it that route. We won't bore you with all our stuff first.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, first of all, thank you for considering this issue. I know it's a very big issue. We've spent a lot of time together talking about it. I'm not going to spend too much time personally talking about it. I'm going to get in a group of different individuals coming up one by one. So in the interest of time, I think we're going to get going with that, because I know some people need to leave. But if it's okay with you, we've got about eight or nine people who'd like to speak. I'll just call them up one by one as we go. First person is Tiffany Benin from Visit Salina.
A city clerk needs to have names.
Oh, yeah. If you could just read in your address.
We may know you, but-
Pat, if you want to read them each time.
Well, no, I mean, you mean Mr. Benin's name?
Yeah.
Yeah, your name.
Okay, Pat Beatty. I'm a citizen, donor, and fundraiser for this.
Oh, that's what you meant. I thought you meant each person that came up. All-around good guy.
I'm Tiffany Benin, and I work with Sports and Special Events for the Visit Salina Division of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. And Visit Salina certainly supports the proposal for a downtown fieldhouse. The facility is significant to the community for many reasons. As you've heard, when you work with the Parks and Recreation organizations like the YMCA, I'm even hearing from Jake Sharp at the Hangar of Sports Complex, says this would be a great project for him, too. But for Visit Salina, it fills a need when attracting and hosting sporting events specifically in our target market of youth sports. We know that with the youth sports market, we're not only attracting kids, but we're attracting their parents, their siblings, often their grandparents, and others. And they're all staying, dining, shopping, and spending in Salina. And this is the reason that youth sports is our primary target market. In addition, the facility, such as the fieldhouse, is becoming more of a factor when attracting collegiate events as well. And I'll give you a couple of examples, scenarios. Salina hosts several MAYB tournaments, and after registration for those events exceeds a certain number of tournaments, they often end up scheduling games outside of Salina. Sometimes they go as far as Lindesburg. They might even go to McPherson. And when that happens, teams have to make a decision as to where they stay, shop, dine, and so forth. And when that happens, options such as McPherson become viable. I've also had several face-to-face talks with USSA, which is United Specialty Sports Association, and they host basketball. We also work with USSA when they host a lot of baseball tournaments, and they've been very successful here. But they've told us, you know, "We'd love to come there, but we need a facility to do that, one with more gymnasium space." Collegiate basketball requires off-site facilities outside of the Bicentennial Center during tournaments. This is often very difficult to find. And sometimes teams are required to travel outside of Salina to outlying gymnasiums. And this is a small inconvenience to the teams, but at the same time, it's becoming more notable to the teams as well as to those organizations. So it's going to be something that's required more as we go forward and try to recruit collegiate events. And secondly, while those teams are not in Salina and outside practicing, you know, say they go to a quick trip to Solomon, if they do that, it's more likely that they might go to the Brookville Hotel for dinner, and that means that Salina restaurants are missing out. So there's just a couple of examples. And the bottom line is, the fieldhouse would provide a significant tool for Visit Salina to feature when sports associations and event prospects are deciding to host, and where to host, and deciding on that location.
Great. Thank you, Tiffany.
I'd like to introduce Jeff Andrews, who's a teacher and coach at Salina Central.
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity to listen and consider the Downtown Rec Center. Like Pat said, I'm a teacher and a parent and a coach here in Salina. And I grew up here in Salina, moved away in high school, but love the opportunity to be able to come back and teach and coach here. When talking about gym space and availability, as coaches, we spend almost all of our time figuring out what youth teams are going to be in the gym on which night. A lot of times, we have some players here. I don't think all of them are going to talk, but there's times they're there till 10 o'clock at night on a school night, oftentimes sharing the court with another age group. You know, so we have anywhere to 20 to 25 people sharing one gym. We've got another 25 in another gym. And I know the coaches at South will tell you the same exact thing, that getting people viable gym space on a weekly basis is a very extremely hard thing to do. And at that time, they only get one to two practices a week in our gym because we're split with so many different teams. And those teams are only our highly competitive traveling teams, not the kids that are playing Parks and Rec or YMCA that deserve just as much playing time on a court as anybody else. So by the time they get to the high school, they have the chance to be able to play high school basketball for us. When it comes to pickup or shooting, our players or kids in the community will tell you that for them to get into our gym, you know, they have to give us a call, text us, somehow get ahold of us, and then know the right person so that we can get them in the gym to shoot. There's no place in town just to go pick up and have a court available. The YMCA is there, but sometimes there might be a game going on, or there's other YMCA teams that have games going on. We just need a place to be able to go in and play. There's multiple times where Coach Finch and myself opened up the gym for Brown Mackey because they don't have really a home floor here in Salina. And I know those guys that come from all over the United States like to just go play some pickup basketball, and we don't have that opportunity here in Salina, whereas a rec center or the fieldhouse could provide that for them. And also, when you think about it, one of the classes I teach at our school is a criminal justice class. And we talk about institutions of social control, giving, you know, our youth and all of us adults something that'll teach us guidelines, morals of, you know, of society to live by. And nothing's better to do that than with sports. And having a safe place to be able to go provides these youth somewhere to go instead of being out running the streets and doing something they shouldn't be doing. We've already talked about location a little bit with that, but losing, having it downtown area is great simply because we'll get all those people down there at the heart of the city. Losing gym space at the YWCA when I was younger, losing the gymnasiums at Roosevelt Lincoln when they tore that down, you know, those are a lot of courts that we lost that we could get people playing games. As far as future tournament hosting goes, we host two tournaments ourselves through, you know, Mid-America Youth Basketball. And we get, on a Saturday in November, we're hosting one in about a month from now, we'll have anywhere from 60 to 80 games going on on just one Saturday in Salina. And we can't get more because we don't have more gym space. We're using Lakewood, South, Central, First Covenant Church. There's oftentimes we've used, you know, Webster, you name a gym in this town, we've probably used it. And MAYBs begged us in the past, "You guys could host more games and stuff like that if we had more gym space," and it's just not available to do. But I think we could probably get anywhere from, you know, 100 to 200 teams here on any given weekend, just because, you know, Salina's central location. So thank you, guys, for listening to us this evening, and hopefully we'll have your support.
Great, thank you.
Doug Finch, teacher and coach at Salina Central.
All right. I'd like to thank the City Commissioners as well for giving us an opportunity to talk about this rec center and this fieldhouse. I'm going to, I don't want to dwell on everything that Jeff just said, but he's exactly right. Gym space is critical for us. We are searching early in the year, trying to get our tournament schedule. We're searching for churches, like he said, any private place that we can play. And it's just a real difficult time for us. And when you start throwing in summer leagues, you know, opening up the opportunity to play in the summertime, we have summer leagues, fall leagues, volleyball tournaments in the winter. Our gym is just incredibly busy, and I know all gyms are in town. So it's just something that would really help ease the pressure on our gyms at school and give our youth kids, and also our youth practices and players a chance to play as well. I would also like to address it as a dad of a youth coach. I remember when my daughters played, you know, we went all over the country playing youth basketball. I was talking to a friend of mine the other day in McPherson. I coached his daughter, and he estimated he spent $25,000 personally the last five years. And it was all out of county, out of town, out of state. So we played in some wonderful venues. There's just not enough of them out here to hold people to come to Salina and want to participate. So, you know, the economic impact on my wallet and these guys is huge. So I think we could leave, we could bring some of that money back here if we had a beautiful fieldhouse downtown. You know, it's been my experience, when we go out, you park your car, you walk downtown, you shop at their shops, and you eat at their restaurants, and it's really nice. So I think the impact of being downtown would just be awesome. And then the last thing we'd want to talk about, talk about a creator of tournaments. We have an opportunity for our kids to play big-time basketball sometimes. And for our kids to play next level, pump and run, those kind of things, they're going to Wichita, they're going to Topeka, they're going to Kansas City. And we've always wanted to try to bring these tournaments back home. Facilities is a deciding factor. We just don't have the facilities. And when you go to some of these major tournaments and you look out and you'll see 100, 150 college coaches, they want to go to a central location where they can watch as many basketball games as they can. They don't want to go to South and watch a game, and Central and watch a game, or whatever. So I think having these courts, the creator of tournaments, would be huge. And I think it would be something that Salina could obviously benefit from. So I want to thank you again.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Marissa Bradshaw. She's a student athlete.
Hello, I am Marissa Bradshaw. I am a senior at Salina Central. I'm a three-sport athlete, so I play volleyball, basketball, and soccer. Personally, I've seen a phenomenal athlete leave in middle school because there was not the opportunity she could have to play D1 soccer in the future. She couldn't play soccer all the way around, all year round, so she went to Kansas City. As far as having in-town tournaments, growing up, I was fortunate enough where my parents could always take me to tournaments, but a lot of my teammates could not. And so sometimes they just wouldn't be able to come. We tried to carpool, but it does limit people's opportunities. Another point is that Salina is a great place to raise a family. Even now, I'm thinking about, you know, after college, I would come back to Salina because it is a great community. But another thing to think about is how kids' opportunities will be as far as sports go. And then there's the bringing money into Salina. My parents are business owners. I work for a small business, and so it would be nice to have more people come in, our downtown to be full again with stores and economic growth. And then there's the point where facilities are limited, having to call in coach to come let us in the gym. And if all of us are doing that, it kind of can get crazy, and it's, can I get into the gym, or is their youth team practicing right now? And then just the downtown location would just help with the small businesses. And yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Put her up for mayor. Nice job. Mark Spear, he's a youth coach.
Great.
Mark Spear, citizen of Salina, Kansas. From a youth coaching perspective, been doing this for roughly eight years with an older son as well as a younger son. Learned the ropes very, very hard early on, that you better find your gym space, you better get ahold of the right people at USD 305 as soon as they start taking facilities calendar requests, because if you don't, you don't stand a chance of finding a place for your team to practice. You know, I think, and I don't know if you guys had time to read it, but I think the most recent case that I can tell you of, a need for more facilities in Salina. There's been some guys, there's a group of kids, 15, 20 kids here right now this fall, that aren't playing a traditional fall sport, you know, football, volleyball. So they're going to work on their basketball skills. Well, because of the demand for gyms, they can't get in a gym now. You know, two of their three slots are now taken because of other programs that have rights first. And these are kids that go to these schools, these are, you know, the future athletes at our high school. These are kids wanting to, and we're replacing their opportunities to use these spaces for, in one case, you know, an adult drop-in league, which is necessary, and I respect that. But when we're misplacing our children for things of that nature, it just tells me that we don't have the facilities we need if we can't take care of our kids. So I'm just going to leave you with that. Thanks for your consideration.
Great, thank you, sir.
Damon Boyer, he's a youth coach.
Thank you for your time. My name is Damon Boyer, and I'm a director of World Class Sports Basketball Club here in Salina. And I'm currently a teacher in the USD 305 system. I teach at Metalark Elementary School. This is my 16th year of teaching. I've also been involved with the Salvation Army Football Program for now going on 16 years. We just finished our season this weekend. World Class Sports is a nonprofit organization here in Salina, currently going on its 17th year. Our club this year will consist of at least 10 teams, both boys and girls, each team consisting of anywhere from eight to 10 youth, and ranging in ages from eight to 12 years old, including every, players from every school, every elementary school, the two middle schools, and even Southeast Elsaline and Sacred Heart, or St. Mary's. And they consist of players from one end of town to the other. The cost of travel for these teams, however, varies based on the tournaments in which they choose to participate in. Most of these tournaments are located out of town, with the exception of the few that Coach Finch and Coach Andrews were alluding to. And if teams want to play more competitively in big-time basketball, they'll need to go to places like Kansas City or Topeka in order to do that. There's a great desire for competitive teams to come west because of, Lawrence, I believe, is the farthest west that any facility can hold tournaments of that magnitude. And then wherever there's travel involved, of course, there's some hardships for families and money involved. And so not only is there the cost of gas, but there's also the cost of food and the occasional stay in a hotel. It's not uncommon for a family to spend $300 to $400 a weekend just to go play in a tournament outside of town. One of our goals is to help coaches, as part of World Class Sports, we help coaches secure practice spots. At the moment, our main practice facilities are the USD 305 schools. We schedule practice for teams that will use middle schools, high schools, and even several of the elementary schools. All practice times are after the local schools have finished their own practices, obviously, because they have first rights. And now that the school district has added the participation of 7th grade in the schools, that practice time has been cut considerably as well. The difficult part of scheduling comes on certain nights when, like, say, Monday through Friday, there's a certain window of opportunity where a team could have a practice from like 5:00 to 6:00, because of the teams that don't want anybody in there till after 5:00, and then recreation activities starting at 6:00. And so trying to get 10 teams in a little window of opportunity, sometimes it takes that there's two practices on a court, like Coach Andrews alluded to, and two different groups practicing on the same court. So you get about 12 kids per team, or 10 kids per team. It can get pretty hectic, as I'm sure you can imagine. There's a lot of inconsistencies as far as practice times are concerned, having to work around different things, such as school games, family nights, band concerts, that sort of thing. And so the inconsistency makes it a hardship for families as well to establish some sort of routine. And there have been instances in the past in which practices can't occur until 8:30 to 9:00 at night. And obviously, being a teacher, that is not an ideal situation for us to be in. So we have to resort to having practices at the local, a couple of the local churches, and any other gym that we can find in order to get everybody in. So a recreation facility or a fieldhouse would be a tremendous opportunity, not only for the city of Salina, but most definitely for our youth. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Hank Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor Householder, City Commissioners. I am Hank Boyer. I'm a retired citizen of Salina, and this is my second attempt at this. I was on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board some eight to 10 years ago, during the time that we were looking at the old YWCA, and came to the Commissioners and presented it. I believe Jason said that was in 2004. Thanks for jogging my memory. I'm not going to be labor the issue. These people have explained to you the need. The need hasn't gotten any less since we were looking at it back then. It's important- It's important to our young people to have these facilities. I currently am following some grandkids, and I know how costly it can get to travel with your children. It would be nice to have some of these activities in your own hometown, where it would also help the economic development, the impact on our businesses in Salina. So I'm just here today to encourage you to adopt Resolution Number 14-7146, and so we can proceed with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trace Walker.
Larry's going to join me. We both wanted to address the issue.
Duo Act.
Yeah. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to the Field House and to all of you, and thank you for your time. I, I want to go back just a little bit and talk about downtown Salina. Some of you heard this before, but as a youth, you know, that's where I grew up, was in downtown. And, and when you wanted something, your family wanted something, you went downtown. And get ready to go back to school, you went to school specialty, or Knight's Sporting Goods, or, or Klein's, or Steeple's, or Stevenson's. And, and it was just the center of all activity. And I just, I've always had a dream that maybe that Salina downtown could be that again someday. And that's not to take anything away from the businesses that are down there today. They've done a tremendous job of surviving and even thriving despite the lure of South Salina. And, but when Brian came and, and shared the Field House concept, it really changed my thinking that it's not just a dream, maybe this is something that really could happen for downtown. I just saw it as a real game changer. And to the point that our company made the largest pledge we've ever made to a civic project, to the, to the Field House. We just believe in it that much. And Larry's going to talk about the Salina business community and their support for it. And we're just, we're just one of those supporters. But because we're in the hotel business, we, we have an interest in building a hotel in downtown Salina. And, and I can't promise you today, I'm not trying to convince you to, you know, to do something on that basis, but I can tell you that the Salina business community is very committed to this, to seeing downtown grow and prosper. And so when we saw what Jim Wilson had done, and those folks at Assurance Partners, and we all saw what it used to look like, and we heard about the Field House concept, we just got really excited, the business community, about downtown and what could happen. And, and I think the reasons are this. One, all the businesses in Salina, we need a vibrant downtown to recruit talent to Salina. And Larry will talk about that more. And second, I think we have a city commission that's enthusiastic about the core of our city and preserving it and revitalizing it. And so I think we've got a unique time, and, and the Field House is, is, I think, the key to that. I think our city needs to draw a line in the sand somewhat that says, every project of significance, you know, maybe the soccer field can't be downtown, but every project of significance, our downtown needs to have a fair shot at that. And we've got a good shot at this, and I just, I hope we take it. And I thank you for your time, and I just encourage you to support it. So thank you.
Great, thank you, sir.
Just wanted to share some thoughts about the other side of what Trace talked about. And again, we, we obviously support the project and encourage you to, to adopt what's being proposed today. But we look at that project as a piece of the puzzle. When my father got out of World War II, he bought a building in downtown Salina in the late 40s. He and my mother moved into that building. He worked out of that building. They lived on the second floor. And two of their four children lived in that condo or apartment above business place where, where now those are being revitalized today. They would walk downtown, they would do their shopping downtown, they would go to the movie downtown, they would go out to eat downtown. And there was really no need for them to go other places, because everything they needed was downtown. When Trace and I started talking about this probably four, five, six years ago, about, you know, what if, what if, and what would be the possibility of making it something even bigger? And as you look around the, the state of Kansas and see what other communities have done, Wichita with Old Town, Manhattan with all the downtown redevelopment, obviously Lawrence, and what they've done over the years. And if you go outside of Kansas, to Oklahoma City, or Pueblo, Colorado, or Grand Junction, Colorado, and you can go on and on and on, about communities that have had a big vision, a vision of going back maybe to the way it used to be. Not to abandon what's been developed, or the need to go south, or the need to go north, or east or west, but the downtown is where every community started, in Salina's case, over 150 years ago. And what would happen if you could make a significant difference in downtown Salina? What would happen if you did a redevelopment project that was far greater than anybody ever dreamed? What would happen if there was a hotel in downtown Salina? And we ask that question a lot. So we invited 40 CEOs to a meeting, and we said, tell us what your issues are of getting people to come to our community. Well, obviously, one is a recreational facility in recruiting talent. That generation now, their kids may be out of the home, they kind of like to live in downtowns. They like the loft living, they like being able to do everything in a downtown setting. My kids' age, they're kind of interested in downtown. If you go to the bigger cities, you have a lot of those kids that want to live in downtown where the action is. You can go to Kansas City and see some, what's happened when they built a Sprint Center and those types of facilities. So we had a meeting, and we said, what, what would happen if we could build a project around the comprehensive plan that the city of Salina has already put out there, that we've spent a lot of time on? And what would happen if these, if business owners in our community, and again, to reiterate what Trace said about all the downtown business owners who have, have put a stake in the ground and said, we're going to make this work. And we admire the heck out of them for doing that. In big business, recruiting talent to Salina is not always easy. So you have to have a lot of different avenues of interest for people that are being recruited to our community. We think if we can revitalize downtown, and we know we're not here to talk about that today, but we see the, the rec or Field House project is a large component to, to, to what we envision as a group of going forward over the next five to 10 years, of making Salina the destination, and not Manhattan, or not Wichita. It's, it's something we want to do. We think the city would have a high interest in that. And we know a lot of business owners and the citizens would have a high interest in doing something like that. So with that, I'll, I thank you for your interest in allowing us to come up and talk about another project that we'll get into more detail somewhere down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just two more.
You're fine.
Angie Lassley, she's the executive director of the YMCA.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to speak and share the thoughts about the YMCA and the potential Field House. I've been very fortunate that myself and my predecessor were at the table from the very beginning with the individuals, looking at the field center, or Field House concept, and we are very supportive of that. The YMCA, as a nonprofit community organization, has three areas of focus: youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. We cannot do that by ourselves within our four walls of our facility. And we know that there are opportunities to partner with other organizations, whether it's Parks and Rec, private organizations, other nonprofits, to be able to make sure that we are serving the needs of our kids and our families here in Salina. And we are very supportive of continuing to have those conversations. Of course, any potential partnership opportunities that we will have have to go through our Board of Directors. But on behalf of the Y, we appreciate being at the table. We appreciate the concerns of people not wanting to compete with the Y, because we definitely don't want that. But we do feel there is an opportunity for us as partners through this process to be able to serve those kids and make sure that we're continuing to build a stronger Salina. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Melissa Hodges, Salina Downtown, Inc.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you all. Again, I feel like we've been here before, but here we go one more time. As you read in your packet, Salina Downtown has been, has supported a downtown Field House since discussions first began in 2012. But I'm not here just with my Salina Downtown hat on today. I'm here to talk to, talk to you as a parent as well. My children played flag football at the YMCA. They played soccer at the YMCA and on traveling teams. They played basketball through Parks and Recreation Programs. And they also did fencing, which is a little bit of an esoteric sport, I admit, but we did fencing here as well. During that time, we met families from many different backgrounds, and the one thing that every parent had in common was their desire to support their children in the best way that they could. But many times, these parents couldn't watch their children achieve success on the court, on the fencing strip, or on the field. These parents dug deep to come up with their child's portion of a hotel room, or for meal expenses for a weekend tournament. These parents couldn't afford to miss work, let alone take on the expenses to accompany their kids. But these parents did their best to ensure that their kids could still participate, knowing that they weren't going to be able to share in their children's triumph or heartbreak at the moment that it happened. Our family was fortunate. We could and we did accompany our kids and were chaperones to others. Wichita, Kansas City, Topeka, Denver, we had the privilege of watching our sons and their friends compete. It would be great for Salina to be able to host some of those same tournaments that required our teams to travel great distances, allowing all, all parents to watch their children to be able to compete. As an aside, when you drop your child off at practice, you have a couple of choices. You can stay and watch, or you can go run some errands and try to get something done. A trip to the grocery store, carry out for dinner, you get the idea. And usually, you stay close to practice, or close to where the next game's going to be played. A downtown Field House has the potential to generate traffic for our new grocery store, as well as area restaurants and businesses. We can all agree that it's been a very long process to get to this point. Thank you so much for all of the time that you have spent individually and collectively on this issue, and for listening to me again today.
Thank you.
I think we have some young people here. We did invite any of them to speak. I don't know if anybody's going to step up, but if they, they would like to, you're more than welcome to.
Not all at once.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Sure. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Sure.
I'm Darryl Holting. I'm the athletic director at Salina South Middle School. And for the last 25 years, it was a nightmare trying to schedule our kids around people coming in, wanting the gym, who we wanted to help but couldn't. Adding 7th grade sports last year compounded that problem. I felt sorry for Parks and Rec, because they had to come on Friday, pick up a key, go through the whole process of where the scoreboard, how you turn it on, so on and so forth. And then on Saturday, I would be out doing something, hey, the score, they called, the scoreboard doesn't work, and, you know, we have teams in, and so on and so forth. I really feel like this is way overdue. It's a great opportunity for our city, and I think that we have actually cut our middle school basketball practices short to allow this. Teams to practice, they're not practicing at 10:30 at night. And I don't really think that's probably the right thing to do for everybody involved. And I would appreciate your strong consideration to this issue, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this issue? No? All right, now make sure you stick around for the really boring stuff.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into the boring stuff.
Yeah.
Can we take five minutes?
Why don't we? I took my five minutes earlier, but go ahead. Is that a mayoral fiat? Okay, we'll come back in five minutes.
Consortium developing an alternative to Apple Pay, which I gather is called Currency, and that would not use our credit card.
This is all things considered. I'm Melissa Block.
And I'm Rob.
That's up from him. We're near our city manager.
Seven months a year.
Oh, where'd he go?
I think it's the other room. He'll swing out.
And all the people.
Gosh, we fend the crowd out.
I told him.
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and call this back, meeting back to order here. And I guess we'll pick up where we left off. If nobody else has anything from the public at all, we'll just move back into questions for staff, or comments, discussion among the Commissioners.
I have a charter ordinance question.
Okay.
How does our charter ordinance compare with other first-class cities?
I, I think I can answer that, but I'll defer to legal counsel. The, each city is going to have a different list of charter ordinances. Some may not have chartered out of anything, because what you're doing is, is when you have a charter ordinance, you're chartering out of a particular non-uniform law. So for us, it could be this issue, or for others, it could be a different issue. That's why we have, I don't have them in front of me, but over 34, I know that, at le, or at least 34 charter ordinances, because in time, we've said, well, that's non-uniform and doesn't really fit Salina, so let's create a charter ordinance for that. So you're going to see it all be different from community to community.
Would every community approximately our size then have a charter ordinance that is similar to what we have?
Well, again, each charter ordinance, we have multiple charter ordinances. If you go to the back of your codebook, so each one is based on a specific piece of legislation that the state approved that was not uniform. And so what would, cities don't typically use charter ordinances unless there's a particular reason. So if someone run across an issue, maybe issuing some debt like ours, they would have addressed it in some way. But there's no hard and fast, or one-size-fits-all approach to those. So you could have, another city that dealt with streets, they might have $12 million, or buildings, you know, $2 million, $10 million. It's really just hard to tell. It's truly going to be different. And most cities would likely have more than one, because there's more than one piece of legislation they may have decided to modify out there. So they're just going to be different.
Could there be cities, then, that decide to do everything like by sales tax, or questions on elections, that kind of thing, then? Or would they have, by raising funds for projects, by just letting everything go to the, the election by question?
Sure. Yeah, you have different philosophies of governance across the state and across the country. You may have a city that says, we don't want to issue debt no matter what, cash only. I've, I've seen those. It's pretty rare, because many times you don't have the cash to do the big things, and that's where the debt comes into play. You'll have cities that issue too much debt. And when you really look at where we're at with the debt that we could issue statutorily compared to what we have issued, we're really low that way. And there are cities that may say, you know, I won't use the property tax, I'll use the sales tax only, or I'll, or I will use the property tax, if, you know, folks want to do that. You just really get different approaches from different, different philosophies in different cities.
So did we amend the charter ordinance on, like, the overpass up there?
We didn't need to for the overpass. We did amend it, you'll find, in the same, I believe, Number 34 amendment that addresses Kenwood Cove Water Park. That was amended to reflect that specific facility. And in that case, rather than kind of doing an across-the-board or kind of a, maybe an overhaul, it was just created the, the water, or aquatic center topic, and then put the amount in there. And that one was fine. The public was, was comfortable with that, and there wasn't any concerns at all with that one.
Would this be that same process?
Yeah, it would be the same process.
So this would be, instead of G for the Kenwood Cove Aquatic Park, it'd be H for a Field House?
Okay, yeah, I misunderstood what you were asking. It could be, I mean, it could be where you specifically just say a recreational Field House or something like that. Or it could be where you modify for buildings, so that later, if you, later on, maybe, maybe 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, you say, well, we need a public works facility, and that's going to cost X dollars. You could address buildings in general then, or you could address them now. And if that happens to be the right number, that's fine. If not, you can address it, again, even address the amount at that time. So it's really, it's really up to you. I mean, this is a building, and it'd be easy just to amend the buildings. Or if you wanted to isolate it to the specific type of facility, you could probably do that. I look at our legal counsel to make sure, but, I mean, we did do that with Kenwood Cove, so I assume we could do that.
And the million on the buildings was enacted when? When, when, when was that established?
I, I don't know. In looking at the charter ordinance, it has amendment- In looking at the charter ordinance, it has amendment dates, but I'm not sure when that particular change was there. That might have been in an original. I really don't know, because we really haven't done any new building, this, you're really talking about a new building need here. We really, I can't, I don't know when the last time, other than the, well, other than the animal shelter. And the animal shelter, I believe, is specifically mentioned in there.
What about the $750 for the steeple? Did that, was that done so that it would not exceed the 1 million? Is that why that was 750, or?
That was not a bonding situation. I believe that was a cash grant, and so there would be no need to amend the charter ordinance. It's just specific to the geobonds.
Okay. And then, one other thing on the charter ordinance, and then, your guys' thought on this, and ladies?
Thank you.
Is, is, you know, the, the seven points, I think, here, you guys have any desire to go through them one by one?
Makes sense. Sure.
Because the charter ordinance is kind of number seven. I think we might be able to breeze through this.
But that's one of the most fun.
Yeah. We might be able to breeze through this a little.
The only thing I don't like is, I don't like the idea of amending the charter ordinance, but...
You're getting voted down, John.
Yeah.
So it's going to be that, it's going to be the, the long one.
So I, I, I think, just to start with, number one, being the facility, the type of facility, and some of these should be knocked out. And the reason, my reason for wanting to go through these one for one is that, on an overall, there is not a staff recommendation. But on each one of these seven items, there seems to be some sort of staff direction. So I think, just to, so that all of us here kind of are on the same page and know where, where everything is, I think it'd be helpful to, to be able to address questions to each one of these items, and then have staff respond to that. And so, I guess I can go first on the, on, on number one, the staff recommendation for the, for the type of building, it's a fieldhouse building concept. And do you have a short little 90-second thing on maybe the process by which that is unique from any other thing that Parks and Rec may have needs for? I mean, is it, does that fulfill all the needs that, that you have in this arena from a Parks and Rec standpoint?
Yes, I believe it does. I think we're looking at multiple factors there. And first and foremost, we didn't want redundant services, I guess. And that's, definitely checks that box. Secondly, need, when you look at, we're not hurting somebody else, and we have a need, how do we fulfill that need? We felt like this was the best fit for that, based upon the demand that we see, what our existing programming loads are, et cetera. So we firmly believe the concept is the right, the right piece in terms of the fieldhouse, and that's what we would recommend to you, if that's something that you wanted to move forward.
And is there any thought to, any, any possibility and ability for future expansion for anticipated needs that would come along with it? You just had said that this, that this will meet our existing needs. But is, if we anticipate any additional space, is there, does this concept lend itself well to adding more space to?
We've had some preliminary conversations in regard to potentially, you know, the need to expand in the future. I would not say we've gotten into great depth on that, but we have looked at options and different things we might do, whether it be to go vertical, or whether that be to go, if you will, potentially, and I emphasize potentially, further north.
Commissioners, to add to that, to the, that's a really good question for, if you go forward and we're into the design of the facility, there's going to be a million of those questions where, if we talk to others who've gone through this, and they say, I wish I would have, and then fill in the blank, we want a list of all those fill-in-the-blank answers, and that will be one of them, I'm sure. Because, yeah, later on, I'm predicting, just, just me over here with my crystal ball, it's a little bit blurry, but I'm predicting that we might have enough field space. We actually could use, because field space, it takes a lot of space to, to do certain things. And so in year or whatever, 10, let's say, we might need more field space. So we certainly want to make sure the building is designed with expansion in mind, in which direction, how it'd be done, and so forth. And that was definitely a design question for us.
If I could piggyback on that question, I was going to ask originally if you were sure six courts was enough, just from listening to people talk this evening. A large turn, if you want to get a lot of people in one building at one time, six courts would not be enough by itself, of course, we'd have the rest of the city. But does that design include a fair number of spectator seating for tournaments?
It, it does. And again, this is very preliminary on the design piece, so I don't want, want to oversell that, and we'd have to go through the process to get there. But it does take that into account. And I mean, things that I've seen in different facilities, not to get in the weeds, but, again, traffic flow in and out, making sure games work, where you can move people in and out of different courts, if you will, without interrupting other courts. So there's a lot of things that would go into it, as we would lay that out and move forward.
And what I noticed on the pictures, which are really nice, the, including the 9 million, the railroad and the, and the elevator were both put underground. So that it'd be easy access in and out, you know, nothing worse than being late for a game and having to wait for a train.
We haven't finished negotiations on that.
Right. I like the idea.
Great. Any other questions on that?
Well, and I guess probably my expansion question probably relates more to number two.
Location.
Which is the location, that this location and site would lend itself to expansion opportunities.
Yeah, again, to Jason's, to, I don't want to, to jump too far ahead, but the design piece would be a big factor in how we utilize the space, and how we laid everything out, and what our future opportunities were. We'd certainly want to be, have some foresight to make sure that we're thinking ahead, looking at those possibilities, and then traveling and seeing what opportunities exist to maximize the existing properties.
Commissioners, when you, when you look at the site, the city would still control the property. When you look at the, what's really the field turf area there, and you have that part of the L, the city still has that property to the west. There's always a potential there. Now, you'd like to preserve some of your parking up close, but in a downtown environment, quite honestly, people are pretty used to walking past stores and restaurants and things to get to these facilities. We don't control the property to the north, and so that would have to be something that we would need to think about in the future. But I'm not, I don't know if that could happen or not, but certainly, we'd want to be thinking about that, if in fact, we think the north would be the way to expand.
Are there any height limitations when coming to an issue? I mean, if you, if it was designed such you could add an entire second level on top of what you already have?
There's usually two things we deal with that would limit height. One is zoning, and the other's being too close to the airport. We don't really have a too-close-to-the-airport issue here, so it would be zoning, which, if you, if you, if community wanted it bad enough, we ran into a height issue, you could consider a variance for that particular purpose, I suppose. I, I say you, you wouldn't get to do that, but the city process could, could deal with that. But that would be the limitation to height. Really, quite honestly, from a construction perspective, when you're designing the building and the, the footings and all the wall structures and all those things, if you're planning on going higher later, you better be, well, you have to design it for that now, otherwise you don't get that opportunity later. So, again, that's a design question. I doubt, I would probably be looking at going up, probably be looking at going out. I don't know that for sure, but those would definitely be design questions when you're into the detailed design.
Okay. That's good.
And then looking into, did you want to just head in, straight in the location?
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, that, yeah, sure.
I mean, just if there's any thoughts on that, or, I mean...
Personally, I, I think, you know, the comments were made earlier about the downtown location being sort of a desired location. And, and I like it for many reasons, as far as all the other areas that we looked at. Of course, I like, I, I, I kind of like the YMCA location with the, from an operational standpoint, and I thought that that probably had some clear advantages and, and so on. But, you know, I, I think that there's a desire out there to spend money downtown. And I think if a four-and-a-half million dollar commitment is there, then, then that's a, that's an awfully big, that's an awfully big contribution to doing something special and kind of getting the ball rolling and, and going on redevelopment stuff. We got a lot of great stuff going on downtown, and it's already great. I think, I think if this fieldhouse were to take place, that that's probably the best location to leverage public funds. So I, location-wise, I think it's a good choice.
I had someone comment to me today about location, and what's the highest and best use of that, that site, because it is a downtown site, and it's important, and we ought to take that into consideration. But then I had another person mention to me that, well, yeah, that's, that's true, but you have to understand, this site borders a railroad track and a grain elevator, and you're going to be limited somewhat to the kind of retail establishments that would be attracted to that site. It's not even on a, necessarily on the major street. And so I, like you, I felt originally that the, something in Kenwood Park would, might be more synergistic with the bi-center and that sort of thing. But I've, I've come around on that one, and I, I think that it would probably do Salina Downtown a world of good, with the, the business that it would attract.
It's interesting, commissioners, when you look at larger cities, and all cities have had the same issues with downtown. They were once a thriving hub, and then all of a sudden, there's the push to go to the edges of town, or a suburb, or wherever it might be. And Kansas City, Missouri is a good example of that. Where did they build, you know, they used to have baseball stadium downtown, and where did they build the sports complex way out east of town, right? And so now, they had the opportunity for the, the Sprint Center, and where did they put it? They put it in downtown. Cities are, finally, have gotten, especially larger cities, have, you know, you lost things one piece at a time, so you try to get it back one piece at a time. And one investment won't necessarily make or break your downtown, but if one investment leads to another and to another, that's what you're trying to do. So it's about getting that ball rolling and getting that interest investment in downtown. And so the big cities are finally getting it, and they're trying to get housing and grocery stores, and all the nightlife, and all that type of stuff, and these types of facilities. So from that perspective, it makes it a pretty good location.
Yeah, a recent study talked about how a quarter of middle-income families and lower incomes, income will go to transportation. And we think that that seems like a high amount, but when you think about a car payment, those ever-present taxes, fuel costs and things like that, people are tending to move more towards the hub. And I, and I think Mr. Walker and Mr. Brittigan pointed out quickly the advantages of when Mr. Brittigan's family was downtown, the ability to walk and go to all these places. People are realizing that, and I think that's a big reason why places like the Sprint Center are starting to appear back downtown, as well as that synergy of putting those economic pieces together. And I, I saw there was somebody here from the city, I didn't get a chance to ask him, but I, I almost wondered what kind of their policies were. I, my head was kind of rolling, thinking, okay, if they've got a game, and it's a, a two-night stay, and, you know, the parents maybe want to eat downtown, can the kids go over and hang out at the city, you know, some of the tournament players or something? I just was thinking of all the kind of fun things that could happen. If you're a kid visiting from out of town, you get to go over to what a great facility the city is, and hang out there. And I mean, you talk about wanting to come back for another tournament. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we're selling down here. And of course, the parents get those wonderful cozy burgers, and, and, but you know, it really, I too had thought of other reasons to look at other areas, but, but, but it just seems to keep pointing down here. And, and I think, okay, Kenwood, I could see there's a concept there, but there's, there's no, nobody can have walked anything really there, other than a park. I mean, how many times are they going to do that? You know, if it's the winter, or things like that. It just began to make more and more sense that this was the right location for this. And I think it finishes out what the, the building on the corner that was redone. It really finishes out that section, and frankly, helps protect downtown a little bit from those railroad tracks by putting up a nice big building again. And if it could be two stories, that would be nice. But, but I think it's a nice, nice step in an overall redevelopment plan that, that I hope comes to fruition the next five, 10, 15 years. So I, I'm, the location is fine with me.
What I'm disappointed in mostly, I guess, is the fact that the general public doesn't know about this. And I've gotten calls on that, said, what's going on down there? How come, you know? And I guess if you really want to do something in Salina, you fill this commission room, and, and you make phone calls, and you, you write emails. Because that's the way it gets done. But I, I do like to have the public have full disclosure. I like to see the public involved, and they were involved in the overpass. I think we had models of it out here in the, in the commission room, as I recall. So people could come in and comment. And it just seems a little bit...
I think one of the things...
Closed and individual.
I think one of the things on this, and, and, you know, it's, it's obvious, I think, when, when, when something touches most people in a personal way, they tend to show up more. And I, I think that's probably what we saw here today, and what we usually see, whether it's an art project or, or whatever. I mean, it tends to be if you're, if you're passionate about something, you tend to show up. But as far as the community engagement part, you had touched on in your presentation that, that this particular part of the process would not end any sort of community engagement on this, whether it be in the form of a protest, petition period, which would be that, but even beyond that, that, that there will be some community engagement aspect was, didn't I read that in the package? And did you touch on that?
Yeah. To be quite honest, commissioners, you, you, the struggle that you find in Salina with the public showing apathy, maybe towards trying to learn or trying to find more information versus it being kind of put right in front of them, is the same challenge that all cities have had in this country since the beginning of time. You're correct. If it's an issue someone hears about and they're interested in, they will then take that initiative to learn more about it. It just has to do with voting, it has to do with everything. And so this issue, quite honestly, the media's been covered quite a lot. Now, we all would say, well, the media doesn't get to everyone, and that's actually true. But at some point, an individual has to take initiative on their own to use the resources that they, they have. For example, if you can't be in this meeting, you can watch our meetings on Access TV. You can watch the reruns on Access TV. If you, and there's been a lot of information in the paper. You can, you know, newspaper's not a very expensive means of information compared to certain others, radio stations and so forth. So there has been information out here, but the, the real plan and the engagement is certainly the citizenry, if they, if, you mentioned the charter ordinance, has an opportunity to engage if they want to with regard to that. But the real engagement, I think, is if you go forward, it's about the design and the, and the, and the discussions that you can have to engage the community on the uses and all that type of thing, and bringing those folks in. And we can do that without slowing down the process, and really try to pull people in. But as much as we try to pull them in, they still have to want to be involved and do that. And many times, if you really don't like something, or really like something, that's when you're interested. If you're in the middle, a lot of times, it's not really of interest to you. And that's okay. I mean, because normally, they will come to us if we kind of hit on an issue that's important, and we have to be ready to listen.
And I think it just, Commissioner Crawford, I, I can tell you from my personal standpoint, is that I recognize that we, we represent everybody in the city, even the folks that are against this, and they're not here. I've had a few people that have told me that, that they weren't in favor of it, and didn't think we could afford it, and, you know, for, for whatever other reasons. And that's fine, and I, and I respect that. I think, though, what I've kind of been focused on is, there are a number of things here, and two things in particular on this, and that is the operational model and the programming models, that I really feel like, if this thing does move forward, that I want to advocate on behalf of more opportunities for, for...
Open.
Everybody, and, and the neighbors, and the public at large. And I want to see an operation model that does the most to protect public funds, so that we don't end up with a recreational facility that is impossible to operate and, and upkeep. So I think there's a balancing act in there. I think you can do great good with, with projects, and you can do great harm if you don't do them right. So I think it's important for all of us up here to make sure that the concerns of a lot of these, of these citizens that may say we can't afford it, I see that as, as well. If we are going to support this, we need to make sure that that voice is listened to, and that we're doing everything possible to make sure that we're taking, taking good care, that, that those things are, are looked at and done. So I don't know what better way to do that. We're always going to have for and against, and, and I guess that's why we all wanted to do this, I, I suppose, is that we felt like we could, we're up to the task.
I'm not sure why. I'm sure why we wanted to do this.
But...
Because you like shooting hoops.
I don't know if that's helpful at all, but that's, that's where I'm, and so on, on number three, the operating model that we have here, I do like the hybrid approach. In the blue sheet, and I was, I was trying to find it here, it, it gave a number, do you recall what that number is? 15 to 20? And see, that number to me seems kind of low. And I really think we need to work really hard to get that number up closer to, in my opinion, to 40.
Could I piggyback a concern on that? Because the, the calls I've had have all been in favor, but the only caveat is, sir, you're going to use public money to finance a building for private use? I said, "Well, no, it's not private use, anyone can use." Of course, there'll be fees. And it's built in so that there is some open, open playtime. And then the question comes up, well, at what cost? I said, "Well, probably for whatever way they'd be able to get into the Y or a similar facility." But also, the question I came up with later was, is this free time going to be during hours that it's otherwise open for contracted work? Or is this going to be, you know, on a weekly basis? Well, we don't have anything coming Thursday, so this week, we're open Thursday. Is it going to be built in all? Because if you're having a tournament, or a lot of teams practicing, and they're paying you money, obviously, from a business perspective, wouldn't be very sensible to give the time away.
Sure, sure. Let me hit a couple of things there. First of all, the time, the ideal, the idea behind it is the time would be when you already have staff there. So I'm going to make this up right now, but if you've got three courts that are programmed courts, they may be programmed for league games, whatever it may be. Maybe the fourth court is an open court, so you don't have that at expense with staffing. You're utilizing that same staff to cover it, yet you still have availability of a certain court. The other piece that I think's important, when you speak to it, we're talking programmed versus open, if you will. But there's a lot of opportunity for folks to participate via the program route with Parks and Recreation, too. We offer scholarship programs each year, so a lot of kids in our basketball program are on scholarship. Those games and practices will be held there. If you're part of our league, there is no charge to go do that. The charge was part of you signing up for the program. So I think it distinguishes, something to distinguish it a little bit at that point is that you would still have opportunity through that to, to participate, even in program pieces, open, open pieces, et cetera. So to answer the question again, back to your other point, there would probably be times, like on a weekend, if we have a big tournament or had a big tournament in, there wouldn't be any free time during some of those high-demand events, because you're trying to maximize, if you can, your revenue potential. But the intent would be, again, utilizing existing staff that would already be at the facility while you have some stuff programmed, to have an open court or an open field, if you will, available, where you're utilizing and leveraging those resources as best you can.
And Commissioners, one thing to think about, too, this is, these are early kind of estimates. The key is by forming the partnerships. If we can barter some time like that, we'll sure take it. So as long as we can control the cost, if we can then leverage our relationships, our partnerships, to, to do that. And I think really that the times that are going to be, really, that we need to focus on will be summer, obviously, when kids aren't in school, and probably Saturdays, certain times on Saturdays. And so we certainly have the ability to try to get that up, as long as we know we can, we can work it through the partnership, not, not compromise anybody else, actually complement what they're trying to do, and keep, and keep watch of our operating costs. So I, I think that that's a pretty open-ended opportunity for us still to add more. And we'll make a note that you'd like to see more of that open time, and certainly, as we move forward, we can, we can put that as a target.
I had in my head, for the open time, for the kids in the neighborhoods around that facility to have access to it after school. You know, give them a good place to go, safe, fun, and, you know, like from 3:00 to 5:00 or, or whatever, when the, the parents get, get home from work. And so I, my, my thought is, you know, we want to maximize utilization of this place. But I don't want to exclude kids, because, you know, okay, you can come in, but you have to give us $5 admission. Well, you know, that may be a barrier. And so I, I think we need to keep in mind, and the scholarships are something that would work for leagues, but what would work? And, and I don't, I don't know if that's what you had in mind, was to let neighborhood kids come in and have a nice place to play basketball. If that's the case, I would like to keep that cost very low.
Yeah, we haven't explored it down to the finite detail in terms of exactly how we would administer pieces of that. But there's, I've seen it done a host of ways, in where I, my prior employer, you bought a $2 card. That $2 card would get you access to what I would call the, the open spaces. It wouldn't necessarily get you access to, you know, something that, a weight room, for instance. There won't be a weight room in this one, but that would give you an idea. But you could take your $2 participation card, and that would get you in for, for gym usage. And that was annually, $2. So, again...
That's a good price.
It is. I'm not saying that's what we would do, but there's different ways to look at it to try to meet what the, the expectation would be. And again, to Jason's point, in order to, to try to find the balance there, where the hybrid piece, part of that, too, is the, the ability to control our expenditures and maximize the revenues, to try to make sure we do the best we can to make those mesh. So finding that balance where we have the access, but yet at the same time, we're not creating a huge financial burden, I think is important as well.
Do you know what percentage of income was allotted to tournament play?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I can peek at it if you want.
Well, I was just curious, approximately.
Let me grab it.
I just want to make sure we don't get too much into the details of operations, because we're still so preliminary here.
All we're doing really today is proving whether the concept...
Answer what, what we're doing in the next 18 months, so...
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's important conceptually to kind of know where we're heading. I mean, if, you know, contrary to popular belief, it's not an easy decision.
Yeah, right.
And so I think that probably the most comfort level that everybody can have in making sure that their questions are answered are going to alleviate problems down the road and, and anything else.
260,000 of it would be tournament-driven.
Tournament-driven.
On the estimate.
Are the teams that now vie for practice space, are they paying for time at USD 305, or wherever they can get a court?
We are not, as a, as a city, or a Parks and Recreation Department, I can't answer what some of the individual pieces are doing in terms of the time there. I don't know that.
Okay, any coaches left in the room? But if you want, are there facilities in town that you actually have to pay for, or you just...
USD 305 now, but if you go to the church and some of the other facilities, they, do you charge hourly?
His answer was that 305 is not charging them, but some of the, the other facilities, such as churches, would charge them an hourly fee.
Right.
Yeah, to the schools' credit, for really a long time, decades, the city and the school have had a really great relationship and been able to partner and help each other in different ways. And so that's been one of the benefits that they've offered us with our programming. Their problem is, is they're just not going to be able to, they just don't have the space to keep that up.
Well, and I see that some of this programming also rolls back into location. And I think the comments that the two of you made concerning the neighborhood and, and sort of the drop, dropping-in type aspect of that, I think one thing we shouldn't forget in this whole equation, with the neighborhood and the, with the location and the programming, is the fact that, that I think the number one, the, the number one participation activity is, is walking. And I think one of the largest groups in that are older and, older people. And, you know, that neighbor, that's the demographic of that neighborhood, is, is young people and old, older people. And so I think it provides a really good opportunity there, too, for that particular demographic in that neighborhood to have a safe, well-lit place to walk. And I know that that was part of the concept of this place, as it was kind of talked about during the different study sessions that we had, was that it would be, it would provide a place for people to walk. And that really, you know, kind of, again, I think emphasizes that as a nice location to have this facility. But also, I don't think we want to forget that, you know, where it is primarily for children, I think there is a, an all-ages aspect. And, and just to touch real quick on the programming, when we had some of the citizens stand up and talk, I, I know I wrote, took notes, and I was writing down a few times about how there was limited pickup opportunities for pickup games, and then also that teams were competing against adult drop-ins on that thing. So what that tells me is that there probably is a decent amount of demand for that open programming. And, you know, being that it is a public-private partnership, I think that I wouldn't want to get too hemmed in on limiting the programming because of, well, can we afford it or not? Because I think there's a certain feeling there to, that, that if you go into a worrying if you can afford to operate it, then you, I think you might have to ask yourself if you can afford to build it. So I don't think there's probably going to be a problem with the operation and trying to figure out what that overall need from a Parks and Rec, from club teams, and from tournaments and all that is. I think we can find that balance. But I think that we just really need to be very committed to making sure that this is a, that this is as open-programmed as, as possible.
Yeah, we can sure do that.
Okay. Are the organizations that currently get bumped out of USD 305 or have to fight for space, would they be willing to pay for space at this facility?
We haven't, we haven't done a scientific or statistically valid survey, but the indication is that yes, provided you have reasonable, you know, fees associated with that. And in our model, it's $7.50 for a half-court for an hour. So, you know, if you've got six or eight kids practicing on a private team, that would certainly not be, we wouldn't consider to be overly costly.
Pretty good, and it's, and it's warm inside?
You know, and I, and I kind of see this, I mean, because it is a public-private partnerships, and I don't know, we only have the one number on the cost-recovery model, but I would suspect that probably your cost-recovery would tend to want, tend to almost split out between public, you know, more open and, between the public and private aspects. Because I would see that our cost-recovery, in our cost-recovery policy, would probably go down a little, because as that pyramid goes, it's going to, we're going to have more down at the base. It's going to serve more people.
The more community benefit, in theory, by the, by the model that's been adopted. That's correct.
And so I think we can, I, I think we have the ability, and with, with the policy that we have, to figure out what that balance is going to be, simply by, by using that as our, as our model.
Sure.
How does this affect our, some of our other projects that we have in mind for financing?
Well, before I answer that, I probably ought to ask if you want me to skip to that topic, versus, you're, you're about four topics away from that one. So I can.
So we can go to seven. That's, that's number seven on the...
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and do, go in order, and then get to seven.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you, I can answer it, but if you...
Now, let's, let's stick to the plan.
Well, I'll stick with his questions, if I can get them over with.
So, other than maybe some scheduling issues that we'll hammer out, everybody's okay with the hybrid approach, obviously? Okay, so then moving on to ownership and operational, operating responsibility. Any thoughts, heartburn?
Number five, notes of...
Or four, nothing in four?
Number four, I tend to, I tend to look at that as, you know, there's been a lot of discussion as to the participation of the YMCA in the operation of this, and I'm sure all this can be hammered out in the, in the development agreement, or the memorandum of understanding, or whatever it is that we're doing on this. But I think it's, as I mentioned before, it's, an important thing to me is that we're, that we have a solid operating agreement put together with whoever it is, because I think for years, not having that taken care of at the Bicentennial Center was a problem. And so having that under contract now and everything else is, the situation is so much better. And so I would almost encourage that to, to be, if that's, if, if it doesn't seem like the YMCA as an operating partner, so to speak, is going to be the most effective way, then I would, then I would suggest that we go with a, with a contract for operations on that thing, which, which would not be out of the ordinary for us.
Yeah, this is a type of facility, you could, you could actually break apart different aspects of operating if you wanted to contract out. For example, we could do maintenance internally, or we could contract for that. Now, you have to keep in mind, though, with the Bicentennial Center, one of the reasons we weren't successful, what I call successful, is that, is we sort of treated it more like a community center in how we priced it, and how we dealt with it. And so when we brought Global Spectrum in, we said, "Bring your business approach and experience and knowledge into it." And so, and so you saw some prices go up and some different things. So I think probably our biggest focus is to make sure we stay true to the operating approach that we end up with here, and we, and I agree. I think particularly between the city and the YMCA, there's probably many mutual reasons for us to be in some form of a, some form of an operating agreement and have some integrated rules. And we'll have to explore what those are and make sure that, that we, that they are beneficial to both parties. And that's the idea, is to be beneficial, not detrimental to both parties. And I think we can do that and complement what we're doing. And, and quite honestly, there could be some, some role with another entity or agency as well. I don't think it's limited by any means, but certainly, there's a natural fit there in what we're doing, and I do think it can be mutually beneficial for both. So that is a, really a core factor in, in, in the operating that we think's important for, for us. And I, I think, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they believe that's important for them as well.
Good.
Five?
Just one question, the very end of the section. Notes that the investment group has verbally agreed to address any operating deficits during the first three years. Is that money to be set aside separately to make sure it's there, or how is that money recovered?
We haven't talked yet about the logistic of how that would work, and, I mean, those that are here might want to speak to that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speak to it just yet, because we haven't gotten that far. But what I would say is, is whether we have a development agreement, or some kind of a memorandum of understanding, or some other form of agreement, that's certainly a topic that we'll need to nail down and then have addressed in that way. So that way, it's clear for everyone what the approach might be.
Is there any thoughts of, and this might be for the development group, a question for them, but are you aware, is there any, any thought to having a group similar to a Friends of the River that could, on an ongoing basis, do fundraising or some other thing to help? Should there be a need to offset any shortfalls in there? Would that, would that be a, something to be addressed in a development agreement?
It could. I don't know if it fits a development agreement or another approach, but I think, we hadn't talked much about that, but I, I think that's a pretty good idea, if we believe there's private fund-ra, ongoing private fundraising opportunities here. One area we didn't talk about in here, because again, you can, we can give you numbers all you want, but it doesn't mean they come true, that's naming rights and sponsorships. And so depending on the demand here, and we'll have to see what that is, there's probably some opportunities for that as well, and that'll serve sort of a similar purpose. But we could certainly put on a goal to look at, should that group be formed, and, and what role would they play? And is there a means for ongoing private dollars through that, through naming rights, through sponsorships and other things, and make that part of our operating model?
There could possibly be something in the community foundation, too, I would imagine.
Absolutely.
The public, private cost allocation that we discussed, is that coming square with everybody? Any thoughts on that? I think my only thoughts would be, I think it's probably in here, is simply just make sure that, should the project be $6 million, that it's 50%, it's sort of a greater than. I assume that was understood, but, but...
Yeah, I think that's pretty clear. We can address that in our, in our agreement. You know, one thing to look at, too, and we gave you the numbers on the private investment, the, this would approach, would actually exceed, if it's a $9 million project, the 4.5 from the private sector would slightly exceed the Fox Watson-Stiefel Theater fundraising effort. And I recall, in the time that I was here, that that started quite some time ago, had a lot of trouble gaining steam early, and then it did gain steam. And when it gained steam, it happened pretty fast. And so the, the key behind that is, is it's not that easy to raise private dollars, and you got to offer the right product at the right time. So for the, the private investor group to push for that size of number in, in our communities, that's pretty aggressive. That's a pretty big thing for them.
I just, you know, one thing I was noticing, and just, just looking at those other, some of those field houses, and I kind of jumped on real quick while some of the discussion was going on, looking at that Grand Island facility and all, and I, I'm not an engineer or designer or anything, so I don't know why 170,000 square foot's 5.75 and has a 225 operating expense. Maybe they're closed three months out of the year, I have no idea. But I just was kind of noticing those numbers, and would be interesting to kind of see what shakes out from a design standpoint. But maybe you've got some insight into that?
Well, I can give you a little bit on the Grand Island one. They use that facility for the fair, so they have to vacate that facility for a period of time. But they do have, in ways, a similar model, and that they're not open from 5:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, so they're able to limit their expenses by predominantly being that late afternoon through early evening or mid-evening facility. being that late afternoon through early evening or mid-evening facility.
You know about how long ago they built that? I'm just trying to figure the numbers, why they're-
Well, you'll see some of them, that was not built extensively for that. They took an existing building, retrofitted and what have you, similar with the one in Gardner as well. That was, it's out by, out by itself and it was a big warehouse.
A more rural or more or less densely populated area?
That, where the Gardner one is, yes.
Okay, okay. And that, and that's the kind of information that's handy because-
Yep, and so that the cost per square foot there would be significantly less.
What about the Kansas City one and how long's that been around, the 5.4 million?
I don't have as good information on that one off the cuff.
I mean, if it was built in 1995, I mean, it's obviously gonna, gonna have a difference, but if it's brand new, again, it just kind of gets us into that. And I like their cost recovery model, I like it on that one too. So, just, just some thoughts. I mean, obviously we'll, it'd be nice to make it as affordable as we can for, I'm sure all parties involved, the people raising the money, the taxpayers and everybody else, but we want it to be a, a good facility. Anything we're doing is, we're doing right. So, I just, like I said, that, that was all my thoughts were, just making sure if it was, comes in at 6 million, we're up for 3 million and not 4.5. So, that's it. Thank you. Anybody else, any thoughts on, okay, we'll move along to, where are we at, to six, is that correct?
Seven.
No, I'm sorry, seven.
Seven.
The long one. We need another break before, I'm kidding.
Quick question on the charter ordinance, since we're back to that. Has a supermajority required on that?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Which translates into four votes here, as you probably knew.
I'm feeling like half a man today. Yeah. Might take all five.
Now, for those who would be hesitant to increase the spending limit, pushing this to 4.5 million would then mean any other project in the future up to that amount could just come through automatically if it was agreed upon?
Nothing would go through automatically, and again, it depends on the, how you want to do this. If you took the section that dealt with, that deals with buildings, which is the one we're talking about, which you could use for this project, and you moved it to 4.5 million, then future commissions, if there was another building project up to 4.5 million, could utilize that authority. So, you're granting yourself the authority in essence by that, by that charter ordinance and the public has the ability to respond and say, we either agree by really not doing anything or we don't agree to that authority. Historically, that hasn't been a concern, probably because there were, there was agreement on the decisions. But yeah, the, the authority is with the commission, so just like today, if you, if you forget about the charter ordinance, you think about a street project and we said, well, we've got another great big street project, it's, you know, $8 million or whatever. Today, you have the authority typically on one of those to issue the bonds as a commission. So, it's an authority granted to yourself to do that. So, what you're gonna do is you're gonna look at the, again, the need, the cost, the project, and you're gonna look at how it fits into the budget, the ability to pay for it and some of those things. And the future commission is going to do the same thing and have that same information. So, if you, if you just change the building amount, future commissions have the same authority that you would have for this project. If you decided that specifically you want to highlight this type of facility, which I assume you could do, then if a future commission wanted to deal with a building that's more than a million dollars, they'd have to come back to a charter ordinance amendment or a vote, whichever they would choose.
Okay, so it's a one-time amendment, is that what you're saying?
If it's for this facility specifically, like described as a recreational field house for indoor sports or something like that, and you wanted to carve that out in that way, it would be a one-time because you're probably not gonna build another one of those in who knows how many years. If it's the buildings section in, in that charter ordinance number 34, any building project in the future could utilize, you could utilize that bonding authority. But remember, it's your bonding authority and every commission's gonna apply the same discretionary approach that you would take in this decision. So, it's not, we issue bonds all the time. We haven't, except for Kenwood Cove and that I can think of, and maybe Greg has a better recollection than I, but in about the last 20 years, I'm not sure I recall another situation where we're issuing a few million dollars worth of debt each year that we had to go through this sort of a, I'd call it a technical redirect on how you issue bonds. You do, in Kansas City's issue bonds, so there's very few times you get it, run into a hiccup. So, sort of a little technical hiccup there, really.
Just from a devil's advocate perspective, if someone were concerned about our spending, right now, they only need to be concerned about us spending a million dollars on a building as opposed to potentially 4.5.
Yeah, and they wouldn't be concerned because you can't do it for a million, obviously. So, that's, you know, that's something to think about. But technically speaking, yes. The other thing to think about too, that action really is, that charter ordinance issue is a fairly weak issue. Let me tell you why. It only deals with the ability to issue the debt. It doesn't require you to issue the debt and it doesn't address what revenue source you use to pay for the debt, which is really the most important question, is the revenue side. All it gives you is the authority to issue debt, the same authority that for most other types of projects we do, you have an issue every year. Debt for, but we used to do a lot of special assessments for subdivisions, issue general obligation bonds, road projects, general obligation bonds, until we started using the state revolving loan funds, we'd use bonds for our utility projects as well. So, you issue debt all the time. That's why I say in Kansas, it's very, very, very common. This is an anomaly here, whereas if you were in Missouri and Oklahoma, what would happen is, is you would have to go to a vote, no matter what, you'd go to a vote for every single debt issuance. And it really gets confusing when you're gonna raise a tax and issue debt because public gets confused and they usually say, oh, it's fine to issue the debt, but we don't want you to raise the tax. And guess what? You don't see a project happen. So, so this is truly an anomaly based on what you normally do, but it's something we still have to pay attention to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this one?
Commissioner Crawford, you had, you'd raised a question earlier that fits right into this topic. So, if you want to repeat that, I want to make sure I answer it specifically.
I don't remember what I asked you.
You know what fired me?
Well, I've been listening to these guys for ten minutes.
Can the clerk read it back? Can the reporter read it?
It had to do with-
I try to keep quiet and let them-
It had to do with how this fits in with the other projects that we-
Right, I did ask that.
Thank you, thank you. Excellent.
Yeah, I didn't get an answer to that.
Okay, now I'll give you an answer though. As you know, we have a five-year capital improvement plan and we normally, we have basically three categories. If we, if we have a defined scope of the project, we know exactly what it is, we know you're comfortable with it, because of course you take action to put it in there, and we know how, exactly how it's going to be funded and in what year, within the five years, you will find it listed in the five-year capital improvement plan. If we don't know, let's say we have a good idea of the scope of the project, but we don't, and the price, but we just simply don't have a funding source, you'll typically see it being held in the identified but unfunded. If we are still, we know the concept, we kind of know what we want to do, you're in agreement that at some point that might be something you want to do, not obligated by any means, but we really don't have the scope or the costs identified very well. We'll put it in what we call the for further review because we need to do more of a review. And so, I believe this one is in the for further review because this has been a, I mean, even though it, it seems like it's taken a long time, depending on who you are, at the time that it was proposed, we didn't have a, really a final scope services and we weren't sure on the cost and we certainly weren't sure on the revenue source. So, it's in your capital improvement plan under the for further review right now. It could live there, it could be moved out and it, it could go away. It's totally up to you. But what that means is, is that we do not have the revenue source for this project today and of course you haven't authorized the project because if you say, yeah, go forward, one of the technical steps would also be to make sure that we move it up in the capital improvement plan in the year that it makes sense for it to be. So, that would happen as a formality. But, you know, as we identified in here, at this point, this project wouldn't step on any other projects. We, we're not recommending that you would move another project out. At this point in time, there's no reason for us to do that. So, like for example, the bicentennial center project or the Iron Street Road project or the fire station number one, we're not recommending any shifts or changes at this point in time. Now, as we mentioned though, you really have the two potential means of revenue to pay for this and if, if a sales tax does get renewed between now and 2019, it's truly an easy decision to fund this out of that sales tax, out of the capital improvement part of that. That really makes sense. If not, then we need to be ready to either, one, you will be looking at potentially a property tax increase or two, well, I'll, I'll give you three options. Two, moving some things around to make room for that 300, roughly $300,000 debt service payment or three, if by chance, we're seeing property values grow in our community and we, and we are more feeling like we're out of a recession rather than just technically being out of one, and we have that property value revenue growth back in our budget, you may be able to absorb it at that time. Because we're really talking about at first debt service payment, again, probably being in 2018 or 19. So, there is opportunity for the economy to get better as well. So, there are really kind of four options, but we just feel that if you move forward today from a staff perspective, we need to give you a Plan B or C so that you have that in place and future commissioners have that as well. They know if A doesn't work, if B, C, D, however many options there are to look at. We're certainly prepared to do that.
Well, everybody knows that I, probably that knows me, most of these folks don't know me, but everybody on staff knows me. I'm pretty fiscally conservative. I really look at things pretty carefully and, and I'm not a financial wizard. Leave that up to some of these guys. But, you know, I really, I know that Salina is, has always been a big sports community and, and I remember my sister-in-law worked at Marymount College for Ken Cochran when basketball was a big thing at Marymount College and some of you have been around a while, remember that. I know that Salina's always been big on sports and, and I just appreciate the fact that those of you who've been in Salina and lived in Salina all your lives are not only interested in project that improves Salina, but also the fact that you're willing to open your pocketbooks. And as you know, there's not that many people in Salina that can open their pocketbooks because there's lots of low wages and lots of folks on fixed incomes. So, I appreciate that, what you've done. I, I am concerned that, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I am concerned at the state legislature and what they've done and the fact that I think there'll be a tax burden coming more down to the state, to, to the municipality level. And so, that's why I'm very concerned with being a fiscal conservative from that point of view. I'm, I'm concerned with that because the people that have lived there, here for 40 years and paid on their little house and paid taxes for the last 40 years, still need to be able to fix the roofs on their houses, you know, and not get property taxes so high. So, I appreciate your commitment and those of you who've been able to commit funds, I think that's very commendable. Thank you.
Well, well thought out, well spoken.
I think, well, one, one other thing that really has-
Closing arguments.
-brought up is the, the economic development aspect of, of this project and I, and what I'm, what I, the thought that just crossed my mind is, this kind of thing could be important to prospective employers. And I can imagine that the tour around Salina by the chamber would include a stop at, at this field house to show prospective employers the kinds of things that we have to offer that you may not be able to find in other communities, surrounding communities. And so, I think that's going to be a good thing. And I was also talking to the student athlete over here briefly about, you know, students or recent college grads love quality of life issues, you know, they, almost as much as they love a job. And so, I, I'm thinking that if, if we can provide quality and premier wage jobs in this town and supplement that with quality of life that appeals to the younger crowd, and I think this falls into that category, that can only help our situation for, you know, broadening that tax base and bringing more people to town to make Salina their home.
Say amen, but it's not a church thing.
I say it all, I say it all the time.
Well, before we get into sort of the resolution, because I have a few, a few things on that, I'd just like to say a few words. And first, first of it all is, I really want to thank all of you who took your time to come out today and all the time that you've taken throughout this entire process. It was really great to see young people here and, and so that they could kind of see the way a process works and, and how we do things as a community. I was really pleased to hear the phrase comprehensive plan in the conversation because I think that that's really, and the, and the recognition that that is something that is very important, not only to the commission as we've expressed it over the last several months, but also seeing all the work that planning staff and, and staff in general does to, to help implement that plan. And speaking of those terms, I think a lot of us have that vision for downtown, that it is our, it is our collective home. It's a part that we all can identify with and, and when Mr. Walker was describing all the different experiences that many of us had growing up in Salina, I think, you know, I think some of the things that were left out were first elevator rides and, and things like that and-
Which was my first one too, when you mentioned Klein's the other day.
And I think that those are the things that, that really make a community special and that bring people together. I think everybody can relate to that who grew up here. And I think they want that for their children and I think that they view the ability to do things like that, that those are making experiences. And we need more places and we talk about place making, that's exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about making places to have experiences. And so, I'm glad that those, I'm glad that those thoughts are out there. I'm glad that there's a lot of effort that's going into making downtown Salina a premier location to be in. I think that there's a lot of potential there. We got a great downtown. A lot of downtowns or cities don't have a downtown that has potential like ours does. And we utilize it and, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, there were hundreds of young people downtown for the crawl of the dead and they were alive, most of them.
At first.
But it was a, it was a great experience. And, and I would just kind of end here and that is, is that, you know, we, we have to implement policies and we have to take advantage of opportunities when they present themselves. And I think that if we have a need for a rec center, the fact that we have half of it being paid for by parents and business people and everything, that's a good opportunity and that's a, that's a lot of funds to help leverage other development. And so, I think it's important and some of the things that we've done and how we've addressed some of the policies that look at how we finance infrastructure and, and private development and, and new home construction and stuff like that, these all work together to form a big picture on how we strengthen the city core. And so, it's real good to have strong partners and we need to really take advantage of those partnerships when we have the opportunity for them. So, thank you again.
I usually speak last.
Well, I, I-
Because I'm usually the longest.
I wrote down one word and the word is destination. And I just came back from my hometown, Washington DC. And if you want to see what putting people on the streets does, if you bring in housing, you bring in an attraction, people come to that area just because they're the people. A lot of people probably didn't have any place they were going to when they left the house and now I'm just gonna go down there, find something to do. And if you have a vibrant downtown, that's what you can do. The old saying, build it and they will come, but somebody's got to be first. Something has to be the, the first entity on the block. The corner of Fifth and, and Iron looks really nice. And I, I was helping my mother clean out a room. She's been in this house for 60 years and her philosophy was, well, you start at one corner in the room and you work towards the door. And I, you know, and I can sort of see downtown, you know, we, I think insurance partners has picked the corner that we're gonna start at and just have to figure out which direction to work. And, and I think you said it very well. You know, there's, is an opportunity. Yes, you have to go out on a limb sometimes, but, you know, look what the city would be without those other places that have been put together. those other places that have been put together with public and private money. You know, this would not be as, that's an exciting place. I won't name other cities along I-70 for fear of getting hate mail. But, you know, we have a lot to offer, but this would really, I think, over the long haul, kick us over the top. And I didn't realize how slow these timelines are, but you got to start sometime. Hope to be around to, to see it. But, you know, if not for me, certainly for my grandkids. Because those are the ones that we have to get to come back here, you know, our kids and our grandkids.
I would just add, I think when you listen, people who maybe have never attended these meetings or people watching at home, I think when you look across this commission to give them a little pat on the back, I think you hear pretty much all, all thoughts. We look through these, these subjects very thoroughly and, and I think try and voice concerns and hopefully praise, too. We're not just always up here complaining about everything that goes, goes on. And I think, again, from the gamut of, of interest in people on fixed incomes and those things, I think it's important to take that in consideration. I tend to look a little bit with where Commissioner Hardy was going, and that is, I think it's, it's, as some of the others said, it's a real economic builder. We can't just look at the debt. We have to look at making an investment in our community. And somebody mentioned the other day, and I for the life of me can't remember who, they talked about, gosh, in the old days, you could go out to a few families and there'd be the money and that's the way it was. And boy, those families aren't around anymore. And I don't think that's true. I think we found one, obviously, that's a, that's a big donor. But I think this is how you create that next generation of people who give to their community. Their kids are going to appreciate and see what happens here, and they hopefully are our next generation and they can say, do you remember what our parents did? Do you remember how they got together and they built that rec center? And, and I think we're creating those next families in Salina who will be those generational givers to our community. You know, I went from the start of this project saying, oh, gosh, it's a lot of money, to feeling a huge sense of pride in our community. I think this is one of those things where it is finally a can-do attitude, where people have come together and said, let's move the ball forward. Let's do what's right for, nobody's getting rich off this project. You know what I mean? This is a project that is for, for us, and it's for Salina. And I think the Vice Mayor said it right. It's, it's sometimes it's the right time. And we're sure glad that half of this project is being paid for by the private sector. I mean, what more could you, how many projects can you do where the public just comes out and says, hey? And I think Salina does have a rich history in doing that, which shows us that our minds are together. We're always going to have the naysayers. That's fine. You know, they can drive their Model Ts into town or whatever else. But the ball sometime has to move forward, and we got to look towards the future. And, and I couldn't be happier with the people involved. I think your support groups have been excellent, having the kids come out today. I mean, that's who it's really about. It's, it's not, not us. Heck, some of those are going to be up in these seats by the time this thing is finished, it seems like sometimes. But, but, I mean, it is going to take a long time, but it's a long-term community vision. I, your analogy of, of your, you say your mom said this, your grandma, yeah, your mom's starting one corner, and I think it's an excellent analogy. You start there, and we work our way towards a better community, not just downtown, but citywide. This shows, this is really more about the people than it is about a rec center. It's really Salina saying to itself, it's, it's time to be a community again and to do something together and make this a better place to live. And that's why I really like the project, because I think it says that. And again, not taking away from our southern businesses, they got the road traffic, they got the money coming in. This, this is, this is our heart. This is our soul of our community, and, and I like to see us all moving forward with it. And I look forward to the day it walks in and I play Jason a little one-on-one and, actually, I can't play, you're pretty safe. I'm not a very, not a very athletic guy, so. You know, Steve Snoddy used to sneak in, catch us sleeping when I was working at KTI at the old gym. And I was a city employee once when I was 16. He'd come back about 1:45, we'd still be on lunch break, taking a nap back there, and he'd force us to play. We always lost. But, but it was sure fun getting caught. Yeah. So, but anyway, I'm pretty excited about, and I think, like I said, I couldn't be prouder of, of the people who have already stepped up to the plate. And I know we're going to get more people behind it. Heck, I may give a little sum of my hard-earned city money to, to the project as well, so, yeah. That whopping $300 a month, yeah, whatever that is, we may do something after taxes. It's, so.
If I could, on the resolution, it'd be better to make a motion with the language, with my language, or to make, to make an amendment to the existing language.
I'll let Greg answer this, if he feels the need. But because the resolution is drawn a certain way, I'm assuming that you would need to make a motion with amended resolution language. Now, whether that could be in the motion versus amend it first and then a motion to approve, if that's where you're headed, that's another question. I can give you, I know a couple of things you're, you're looking at, too, and I might, you may already, may already have some thoughts on the language, but on the, on the main language, one example could be to get away from the proposal, recognizing this has changed in time, demonstrating governing body support to form a public-private partnership for the development of a downtown fieldhouse proposal, et cetera, et cetera. If that works, something like that.
That's exactly.
And then you may also want to, and again, you're not locked in anything with this resolution, but if you'd like to send the message on the operating model, I assume you might want to add in there with a goal of X percent open use hours.
Okay. That's exactly the, where I was at with these, so. Thank you.
I was going to, to say, I would stay away from exact numbers. I would, as opposed to saying maybe maximize open use, perhaps?
More of a direction than a percentage, that's kind of what you think?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you know, and ultimately, we'll have a, an operational kind of guideline approach, however you want to call that, that we'll be having conversations. If you approve it when we get that far, we'll be talking about all that and thoughts on the budget and all those things that you can, I say you, maybe you, but the commission will contemplate later. So certainly, as long as we know that's your target and you just want to send a, a message to try to maximize that, we know that, and that's what we'll shoot for.
Got your language together? Hopefully, it's clean.
Yeah, and then the other, the only other thing, if you look on your, on your sheet that, at item G, section, section 1G, private, public-private cost allocation, just to scratch out $9 million and put on to be split 50/50, to be split 50% city, 50% private contributions with city proceeds not to exceed $4.5 million. That would work.
Yeah. Or you could just put it up to in front of nine, and then to be split 50/50, get you to the same place. Whichever's easier for you.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if it's $10 million or something, then they want to kick in five, is all I mean.
They're going to do it for, they're going to do it for nine.
Up two, if we say up to nine or whatever.
Yeah, if you want to cap it at nine, we can always, if for some reason we're further down the road and for, you know how things go, and you have options and higher costs, you can always reconsider that. So for now, I think the target's been nine. I, I think an up to nine.
We can leave that. Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, may I suggest possibly starting with a motion on the resolution as it currently stands, anticipating that you would move directly to proposed amendments if the objective is to potentially build an action that you would want to take this evening in resolution form? I think that might be the, the best way to approach that.
Okay.
I'm looking to Ms. Wicks to tell me if that makes sense from her standpoint. She's the one that needs to keep up with us more so importantly as, as we would build what would be a resolution.
So Greg, logistically, are you, are you recommending then that they would actually move to approve the resolution in essence as it is and second it, and then before they vote, someone could come in with an amendment?
Correct.
Okay. To make sure you understand the order.
Yeah, so that the initial, presumably, if this works for you all, the initial motion would be the resolution as it is presented.
Okay.
Knowing that we anticipate that you would move quickly to motions to amend.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 14-7146, as written.
Second.
Motion is second to approve 14-7146. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the motion to the title of the resolution, amended to, "A Resolution Expressing Governing Body Support for a Private-Public Partnership for the Purpose of Developing a Downtown Fieldhouse." Period.
Okay.
And also to amend section 1 to read, "The governing body expresses support for a public-private partnership for the purpose of developing a downtown fieldhouse and directs staff to commence formal conversations with the property owner and private investment group to address property acquisition and creation of a project development agreement consistent with the following general provisions." Colon. And to amend section 1D to read, "Operating model, colon, hybrid model, allowing for both programmed leased, comma, leased space, comma, competitive tournaments, comma, and with a goal to maximize open use." Semicolon.
Is it?
That's it.
Second then?
Motion is second on the, on the-
Amendment.
Amendment. Do we need to vote on that separately? Can we vote as a single issue?
You would, as far as each of the elements of the amendment, do you mean? I think as the motion was presented, you would be voting on all of the proposed amendments.
Okay.
But you would be voting strictly on the amendments, not the-
On the full picture, okay. Any other discussion then on the amendments? Seeing an all in favor of the amendment section of this?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. It takes us back to the initial motion, is that correct?
As amended, correct.
As amended. Any further discussions on that proposal and its amendment? If not, I'd, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Okay. Great. Go find some money. Let's get this thing going.
Yeah.
Lots of money.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, for coming out and staying so late. We'll be here at 10. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
At this rate, we will be here at 10. At least I'll be at work until 10.
Yeah. Come on, come on, guys, it's about towing.
Come on. This poor guy's over here the whole night, yeah.
Their first man been towed by them.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, item 7.2, first reading ordinance number 14-10756, amending Salina Code sections 38-57 to 38-62 pertaining to the towing and storage of vehicles.
Mr. Gage.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll be very brief with this one. A couple of years ago, the City Commission approved an ordinance that allowed for City Manager's Office and the Police Department to manage and regulate the towing of vehicles in response to police department activities. And the biggest aspect of that was to create certain service standards, pricing, equal or equitable pricing based on request-for-proposal processes and standards for the storage of vehicles. Those are really the big items. The process in the ordinance was very clear about using a request-for-proposal, which is typically used to find like the best proposal out of those who are proposing. In this case, though, it was a process used to, that could be applied to any of the companies that could meet the minimum requirements and would agree to the pricing, then they could be in the rotation, in essence. We looked at it, there were, at the time, there were four interested parties, three of which had been eventually approved under a contract. They've done a good job. We recently amended or extended the contract for two years, wanted to keep the pricing in place, felt that was important. But when we looked at this, we had an inquiry from the fourth about when they could come back in, and that was a discussion at that time. And so our intent was that there would be an opportunity. But when we looked at the language again, we said, we felt that the language wasn't as clear about the process, and we didn't feel the need to do another request-for-proposal process for a lot of reasons. So we felt that a language amendment was necessary to provide the authority to enter into another agreement. And in essence, what this does is, is that if, if you're one of the folks who originally were part of the proposal, or if we do another proposal, you have a certain timeline that we would enter into an agreement. So you have the 90 days to, I'm sorry, 60 days from the initial proposal submission to in essence make good, show that you can do what you need to do, and then you're in. After that, the time opens in the last month of the year annually. And if, at that time, if a new company comes or an existing who wants to be considered again, wants to be considered, they would again have to show they meet the requirements and agree to the minimum pricing, and then we have the ability to enter into a contract and add them to the rotation. So that just occurs in the last month of the year. We felt that creating an open window opportunity is the best way to do it. And what that does is allows us to keep them all in the same timeline as well, which we think's important for when we go back and deal with pricing. So that's what this ordinance does. It's been drawn up by your legal counsel and, of course, reviewed. And in essence, we kind of look at it as a housekeeping item with regards to the intent of what we really wanted to do in the first place. So again, and if we, if we, if you approve this and we do get a request, we'll look at it. If we don't, well, we certainly have the flexibility to address it later if they want to come back a year from December, in essence.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Any, sorry, anyone? Any comments from the public on this? I see her. Hello. Okay. I'll bring it back for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 14-10756.
Second.
Motion is second to approve ordinance 14-10756. Any further discussion?
I did have one question, actually.
Okay, sure.
On the, on the last page, it has a date of past November 3. Has that been corrected or is that still on there?
On the last page?
On the very last page, yeah. With the signatures and the date.
Oh, that may be second reading, is that correct? Okay, that'll be, that'll be our second reading.
Very good.
Nothing wrong with being eagle-eyed and detail-oriented.
Just a, yeah, just make sure.
Okay.
On first reading.
With that in mind, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, resolution number 14-7145, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for animal control services with Saline County.
Mr. Gage.
It's okay to tell me to be quiet, but if you want to get done, I'll be happy to hurry through this for you. As you are aware, after the city and county sort of separated ways with regards to the Health Department, it caused the city to have to create an animal, we call it animal services versus an animal control function in the division. That's in Parks and Recreation. Primarily, we knew we needed that service, and I think it took the county some time to try to determine to what degree they need this, the same service. And so since that time, they'd, or they'd asked if we would consider an agreement to provide services under a contract to them in rural Saline County. And the staff's been working together to do that, and you have heard kind of funny comments about that, I think, or seen those in the paper. But the actuality is, is that we've never actually had a disagreement on anything, but we really didn't have good basis to work from the original relationship because it was a joint entity versus a contract. So we had to create the full scope and determine what that would be and so forth. So it's just been a, an issue of the time needed to actually prepare the, the documents. Had a great relationship with county staff with regards to this as well. What we have is, we have a contract and the basic terms, one-year term, will be adjusted for the remaining part of this year, with an automatic annual renewal unless there's a termination notice provided by September 30 of the preceding year, which is approximately 90 days. We felt you wanted some flexibility, at least early on, with regards to if you wanted to continue or not. Maybe some point in the future, you might say a two-year, three-year or something, but that way you do have that flexibility. The fee, and this is a fee that's requested by Saline County, is $30,000 annually for the service, payable in two installments. It would include with, if the automatic renewals come into place each year, would include a 3% fee escalator built in. Certainly, if any, if either party wanted to interrupt that and negotiate that, you could, but we felt that having that in makes some sense. They were agreeable to that. We don't really have a really good way, this, the scope is a little bit different. I'll talk about the scope, but it's not as comprehensive as it was under the joint partnership or joint Health Department, but it's, it's very comprehensive with regards to cats and dogs. It's really difficult for us to say, it will cost us exactly X amount of dollars to perform the services. But I've asked the question a million times to my Parks and Rec Department and Animal Services folks. They do believe the answer to the question of, will we, will we spend less than $30,000 in our time and direct out-of-pocket costs and so forth? thousand dollars in our time and direct out-of-pocket costs and so forth to do this?" They believe that, yeah, we should be significantly under that, so they feel that's a pretty safe number. With that in mind, though, you do have a historical perspective. Under the old combined health department model, this service was split eighty-five percent city and fifteen percent Saline County, and I don't know that there's a great methodology behind that. It's probably pretty close, if not to what the population difference was at the time. But for two thousand thirteen, the last year in which we did it that way, the quoted cost to Saline County was almost fifty-two thousand dollars. So you can do with that what you want, but I felt you'd at least needed to know that. The service area is all of unincorporated Saline County and also in the incorporated towns of Saria, Brookville, Gipsom, New Cambry, and Smolyn, but those communities will need to receive, will need to receive a resolution of concurrence just because of their incorporated status, sort of a formality. Given that they don't have to spend any dollars directly from their budgets to do this, I do think that they'll want to, they'll want to participate with this. Otherwise, they're kind of stuck with it themselves. The scope of services is in Exhibit A, but there are certain services for a twenty-four-hour call-out. That would be serious dog and cat welfare situations, and when the sheriff's office has determined the need to impound a dog or cat when associated with an accident, traffic accident, crime scene, vicious demeanor of the animal, that could create a dangerous situation. The things you would expect, I think, and otherwise, we wouldn't be providing twenty-four-hour service. We're not going to patrol or anything like that. The service, the scope does not provide for us to patrol out there. So if the sheriff's office is out there after hours, these things come up, then we would respond to twenty-four hour basis. Related to stray dogs and cats under regular shift hours, we would receive at the animal shelter, those dogs and cats of unknown ownership where that are, I should say, unknown ownership where that are not owned, which have been impounded by the sheriff's office. Sometimes people own them, and unfortunately, they just let them loose. Animal services would also provide transport of the animal if the sheriff's office can't deliver the animal. During the regular animal shelter business hours, we'd receive stray dogs and cats found in rural Saline County's delivered by any person. So someone from the rural Saline County could bring and say, "Here's a stray, we accept it," and we would, as we would today within the city. The service responsibilities by both parties with dogs and cats and when they have bitten a person, which we, which wouldn't happen, but sometimes it does. The county, the sheriff's office would provide the first response to the call, complete their respective reporting, and enforce standard quarantine restrictions and vaccination. They're the enforcement side of those things. Issue, if there's an applicable citation, they would issue that, and if necessary, impound the animal, deliver it to the, either veterinary or the animal shelter. And if necessary, they'd request transport assistance from us and notify, they would have the role of notifying the health department if there's a rabid animal that's been determined. Animal service, if there's a bite from an unowned dog or cat, we would provide a trap to the sheriff's office if they haven't, assuming they haven't caught the animal. If there's a bite, the animal gets away. Transport the animal if they needed, test it for rabies, possibly quarantine it and oversee the disposition of it. If it's a bite from an owned dog or cat, we would enforce the standard quarantine provisions. Again, notify the sheriff's office of a rabid animal. Euthanize rabid animals, provide notification to the Saline County Health Department and be responsible for the associated costs. If the dog or cat can't be adequately quarantined by the owner or owner's veterinarian, then we can, we have the option of accepting the animal with the same approach of, that we use when accepting a stray animal. We're not required, but we can. In that case, the owner, since there's an owner that's known to be responsible for the associated fees and costs, so it makes sense for us. The services to the Saline County residents, we talked about bringing in a stray, but we have certain services provided in the city today that have a fee attached, so those services would be offered to rural Saline County residents as well. And that would be, again, to accept the surrender of a dog or cat, not involved in bodying incident over the prior tenure or ten days. The adoption of, other disposition of the animal will then be at the discretion of the animal shelter. So depending on the animal, if it fits our criteria for adoption, we could adopt it away. So we take responsibility once it's given and treat it just like we would an animal accepted in the city. Accept a deceased dog or cat for proper disposal, accept certain pets for euthanasia from an owner reserving the right to refuse the service to the type of animal, size, weight of the animal, personnel safety, or other reasonable concerns. Provide primate cremation services for certain, I should say, private cremation services for certain pets. I almost threw myself there, a little typo I didn't catch. For certain pets, reserving the right to refuse the service, again, based on type of animal, size, weight, service capacity, and those things. So when you look at this, most of the services by the city would be through the request and coordination of the Saline County Sheriff's Office. They're taking on the role that they should have in this. If we don't do any of this, they get all of it, and so you can just, you can just probably understand how the sheriff would like us to get this thing signed. This agreement is very specific about the roles, the protocols to be followed, and the services to be provided by them and by us. And you will note, too, we don't address feral cats, the wild, undomesticated cats, into the shelter. We don't have those as a requirement. We could take them if we want to, but we didn't want to feel obligated to do that because what it does is affect shelter capacity, and what happens is, is if you get too many of the wild cats that you can't adopt, there's a holding timeframe, depending on the situation, and what that can do is cause you to not be able to keep in your, in the shelter those domestic cats that you want to try to have adopted. You have to make room, and that creates a problem, and so that's why we didn't want to do that, and Saline County's agreeable to that. So that's the scope and the cost, and we, again, they've reviewed the agreement. We feel they're comfortable with it and would expect them to take action if you do. So we offer the following alternatives. One is to approve the resolution in front of you, authorizing the mayor to enter into an animal control services agreement with Saline County. Approve it as amended if you have things you'd like to change, or don't approve it at this time.
Who does that now?
Sorry.
Jason, who handles that?
We felt like we had some discretion to run an interim agreement, so we have an interim letter of agreement administratively to where, based on the same service fee unit rate per month, where we provided with a timeline that said, "We can only go so, so long here. We need to get this to the city commission." And the problem is, is they were really running into problems out in the rural area when we, at that point, without being under agreement and without them having the authority, which they did change through their own resolution, and being able to transfer certain authority to us, we really couldn't help them in the shelter without creating some exposure to us, and quite honestly, just didn't have jurisdictional authority to deal with it.
Do they have the, something to transport animals?
I think certain animals. I would imagine in most of those cases, will probably be called to transport, but I think that, that'll work fine. If they can, they can do it. If not, that's fine. There's not an obligation for them to go purchase any kind of formal animal transport-type equipment or anything, but we did leave it in there as a first option.
Animal services still has the same capacity to do this as it did December of last year?
Yeah, I think so. There wasn't a concern, and I told them as we were talking about this, I said, "That would be my concern, is if we say, 'Well, we think we should do it, but we don't have capacity,' whether it be space or personnel." And I said, "Then we need to start whittling away at the services to make sure we do." They felt very comfortable that they could handle under most normal circumstances.
So the city vehicle in the past went into the rural part of the county to collect the animals before?
Yeah, we didn't patrol, but we would go out, again, if there was a call, whether it be from the sheriff's office or possibly a rural resident, we would go on a response basis for certain types of calls, and that's how we would do that. Certainly don't patrol for loose or stray animals.
And I was just curious about the disparity between the thirty thousand dollars and the other number that you mentioned, the fifty, fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars?
Yeah, that's, quite honestly, that last number was based on the percentage allocation and not necessarily a cost allocation, and that's just what it was, eighty-five fifteen. It was like that for many, many, many years. So that's just more of a disclosure item for you to be aware of. As I mentioned, the staff does believe that they can provide the service easily within the thirty thousand. I still felt you should be aware of what it cost before, because that's a kind of a classic question, is, "Well, what did it cost before when we were doing this?" So that's what it cost before.
Maybe you shouldn't say, "What it cost before," so much as what was allocated.
What was allocated, absolutely.
Yeah, that's probably, that might be throwing you off a little bit. There was no true cost of that.
The dollar allocation to the entities.
Yeah.
Just have one question, the last note that says, "Please also note that the service agreement does not require the city to accept feral cats." And I'm wondering, how does one distinguish between a feral cat and a stray cat?
You know, we talked about that, and I believe I asked the same question.
The look in their eye.
And it does take an experienced person. I don't, I learned it's not always a black and white or maybe calico decision.
Issue. This isn't a calico issue. I'll be reusing that one again next week. Yeah, yeah.
But they can, actually, they feel pretty confident they can normally tell the difference in the way the cat responds, the sounds the cat makes and so forth. Usually, the wild cats don't like to be handled at all, and they can tell, and they can tell how they've been cared for as well. So I won't say that they'll get it right a hundred percent of the time, but they felt pretty confident they could. I would say ninety percent of the time or more.
Okay.
So they'll do the best they can on that.
Any other questions?
It sounds like, I'm going back to this thirty thousand dollars for a second, that we are basing our relationship from here forward on thirty thousand dollars, because next year it'll be thirty thousand dollars plus a three percent escalator. What if we find out that it really is fifty-one thousand dollars?
Well, what we would do then is, we would want to find that out. We would want to look at that, that trend of that cost that we have, if we can, if we can isolate it, prior to the, in essence, the ninety-day, the end of September notice period, we would, we wouldn't have necessarily filed a notice by that time. We could start negotiating prior to that, but if necessary, you said, "No, we want it to reflect the actual cost, and it's more than that." We have the opportunity still to file that notice and not enter into the agreement for the following year if, if we don't agree to the financial terms, and that's what we would need to do.
I might just add that, just to give you a little bit more comfort. As we move forward, obviously, we'll be able to, to put together some, some data on how much time, effort, resources, energy, et cetera, that we're expending to do that. So we'll be able to report back to Jason to give him a good understanding of, hey, here's what our output was or outlay was to, to accomplish those types of things. So we'll have some data from which we can make future decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Judy.
Okay, anyone in from the public?
Hello. I'm Judy Larson, seven fifteen North Ninth. First of all, as a person who's been a Yankee fan since I'm twelve, I need to express compassion to all you Royals fans, because you've had a really hard couple of days. You know, not that I'm rooting for you, but I just am expressing compassion, because, man, we've been there. And so, and also, I'm a cat person, so I usually avoid dogs at all costs. But today, I was here, and in the parking lot that runs along the east side of the building, you know, that runs between the building and whatever that street is, there was a guy with a truck, and that's the truck I was trying to identify.
Oh, a big truck.
Yes, big truck. And he had chained two dogs to the truck, to the back of the truck, and I don't think the chain was even long enough for them to stand up.
I hate people like that.
Just, and it was a chain that was, you know, each link was like the thickness of your finger, you know? Far be it from me, in fact, I told two of my friends, "Mark it down today. I'm doing something nice for a dog," you know, and just write it down somewhere.
You got the tag, tag number.
But I couldn't, I didn't know who to report it to, you know, because with the change from the city to the county, you know, I couldn't get a hold of the cops, and I didn't know who to report it to, but I felt like these poor dogs needed somebody to take care of them. I wasn't about to do it, you know, and cats are more intelligent to be found in that situation. But, but I just thought somebody should help them.
I'm pretty sure you should always call Dion when that happens. You should always...
Dion?
No, I'm kidding.
I actually have an animal shelter in my telephone, and I report it quite often.
Well, I didn't know, since the change.
Well, it has stayed the same in the city.
Okay, I didn't know that. And so I didn't know who to call. So, so just as I was getting ready to go get a cop again, the guy started backing out of his parking lot, and I ran over and stopped him, and I said, "You're very lucky to be pulling out right now, because I reported you to the cops."
Good for you.
For, you know, for the dogs. So I didn't know.
Yeah, that's who it is, the animal, animal.
Yeah, that's, that is a good, good opportunity to note to the public that we are at the same place. The city owned the property and building before, so that's why we're there. I think, is the number the same phone number? Yeah, same phone number, same place, and that if they ever have an animal issue that they need us to address.
There were two dogs, and I felt bad for them, you know, because...
That's rare.
I know, it is, trust me. But they didn't have food, they didn't have water, they had nothing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like my two dogs at home right now.
Now yours are spoiled rotten.
And a ferret, thank you, Salina Animal Shelter. Can we piggyback something on here that allow, doesn't allow Adrian to actually enter the premises and bring any more pets home? Can we add that? Is it too late?
You'll have to amend the motion.
Yeah, we may need to amend the motion for that. If I get one more pet, Rolling Hills East.
Yeah.
Okay, any more public thoughts? Okay, bring it back for possible action.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move approval of resolution number fourteen dash seven one four five, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for animal control services with Saline County.
Second. Motion a second for resolution to approve resolution number fourteen dash seven one four five. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item seven point four, resolution number fourteen dash seven one four seven, affirming the need for Saline County's proposed expansion of criminal justice facilities to provide all services at one justice center location, including additional jail space and space for district court and community corrections.
Mr. Gage.
Commissioners, I'll be very, very brief. We do have the resolution in front of you, and what it does is, it affirms the need for the, for Saline County's proposed expansion of the justice facilities and the related services to be added over there to create a justice center. The item is in, is in response to a request for you to decide if you are in agreement with the need. You're not here to address the tax, that's a different issue altogether, it's just simply the need. And that does relate to us in the sense that, obviously, we have a police department and we provide quite a bit of the occupancy over there. So, and, and, you know, it's important to us what happens both before, during, and after, and what happens in our communities. So the sheriff has graciously, graciously, excuse me, asked for you to consider taking this. It is specific to the need of the facilities, and the, and the resolution addresses the issues and then the need, and that's presented to you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this? Okay. You never know, somebody could be out there. Maybe Dean had something for us, I don't know, maybe. Okay, I'll bring you back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number fourteen dash seven one four seven, affirming the need for the Saline County, for Saline County's proposed expansion of criminal justice facilities to provide all services in one justice center location, including additional jail space and space for the district court and community corrections.
Second.
Motion a second to adopt resolution number fourteen dash seven one four seven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero. Takes us on to development business.
Item eight point one, consider a motion to extend the conditional use permit deadline for the electronic cigarette establishment known as Juicy's and the electronic cigarette establishment known as Vapes.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you for taking the time to hear this item this evening and to give staff your guidance. As you recollect, we had a moratorium that was twofold, a moratorium that was on the establishment of any new electronic cigarette establishments or hookah lounges, and as part of that, the second part was basically a hold on any enforcement activity on any existing establishments. And that, that came to an end in August with the passage of text amendments, which made electronic cigarette establishments conditional uses. And rather than extending the moratorium, when the moratorium expired, the city commission passed a motion extending the window for enforcement, and the motion there is at the bottom of page one of your report, and essentially, it gave time for Juicy's located on South Essentially, it gave time for Juicy's located on South 9th Street and the business known as Vapes located on East Iron until the 31st of October to diligently pursue and complete the process necessary to determine whether it can obtain a conditional use permit for its current location. Well, in August, I don't think we anticipated we would run into the situation that we have run into, but we determined at the planning commission meeting on the 21st that that 31st deadline was not going to be able to be met because the planning commission, in reviewing that, determined that the two applications that had been filed for those two locations were inadequate in their completeness and the information that was provided. And part of that is that, especially in the context of a conditional use permit, the planning commission has been heavily reminded and programmed that making decisions in writing and having their decisions supported by adequate findings and reasons is a very important part of their job. And the commission concluded that the applicants themselves had not done a good enough job of providing the reasons why their request should be approved. And that's part of the application process is for the applicant to do the best they can in their own words to provide reasons why their business would not have an adverse effect on neighbors and things of that nature. So we realized on the conclusion of their action on the 21st that we weren't going to be able to meet the October 31st deadline. And so, as we pondered the different options, we realized that the actual final outcome of the conditional use permit applications isn't really under the applicant's control. The only thing that's under the applicant's control is to submit the best, most complete application that they can. So we thought, rather than trying to set a deadline for that established, the final decision and outcome, the most realistic thing to do would be to give the applicants, extend the 31st deadline, but give them a deadline to complete and resubmit their applications. And so, the deadline that we use for each planning commission packet is at 5:00 Wednesday before the Tuesday meeting, we decide what applications are going to go on to the agenda with the report. And so, the option that we thought best fit the situation would be on page three of your report, option one. That would be to allow Juicy's on South 9th and Vapes on East Iron until Wednesday at 5:00 to have an extended period to get those applications submitted, realizing that there won't be a hearing and consideration of those items until November 4th, which is after the October 31 deadline that you had imposed by motion. And at the same time, it is also possible that, say, the planning commission were to deny one of those applications or both of them, those applicants would have the right to appeal that denial to you. And there could be things that could happen down the road with those appeals. So our original thought was, in August, there isn't any reason why we couldn't have this process wrapped up by the end of October. But given where we ended up, we think it makes more sense to have a deadline for a chance to complete, more complete applications as opposed to trying to predict outcomes and appeals and all those different timeframes. So we have informed the applicants that, just as we would with any other application, some of which can be complicated, that staff is willing to sit down and work with them to develop stronger applications than what they submitted the first time in order to get those stronger applications in front of the planning commission on the 4th. So I'd be open to any questions you have.
Okay, any questions for staff?
What would happen with any other business that submitted an inadequate application as far as their ability to keep operating?
Well, this is entirely different situation because we're dealing with businesses who were already had their doors open, were operating. When we're dealing prospectively, let's say we had on the agenda previous a woman who wanted to do a group daycare home on Leland Way. If her application was insufficient or inadequate, she would just have to wait in order to operate a licensed group daycare home to see whether she got approval or not. Here, we're dealing with businesses who are already open. And the fact that they're already open may have made it seem less urgent to them to get these applications in and get them complete. But the planning commission dealt with five DAS pole locations at that same meeting. Those applications were much more detailed and complicated than a conditional use permit application, and those were all complete. When we have people doing group daycare homes, we assist them with the applications. We haven't really had that big an issue with incomplete applications, but it is highly unusual for someone to have a two-page application and leave the second page entirely blank. But neither of these applicants requested assistance from staff to help develop their applications. So we think that the option that we placed in there is reasonable because the one thing that the businesses do control is being able to prepare and submit complete applications for the planning commission's consideration.
Have either one of them had businesses before? I'm assuming that's what's the problem, probably. Never worked with city government before.
Not that we are aware of, and I believe that the primary person we're working with with Juicy's manages 13 different stores in different communities and was somewhat difficult to track down to get. And so, both the lead applicants both acknowledged to the planning commission that they didn't actually fill out the applications, they delegated it to somebody else. And these are both tenant situations, so we are also dealing with that requirement that the owners sign and consent to the application. That occurred in both of these cases, and they're both local owners. So we don't think that is, that was the problem. It wasn't the ability to obtain signatures or permission. But given where we are, we think giving them a deadline till 5:00 Wednesday to submit complete applications would be keeping with the original intent of giving them a deadline.
If those applications are not complete, will they not be placed on the agenda? Will that, is that?
No, my item was continued to the 4th, so we will report back to the planning commission if they don't change or supplement their application. We'll put it right back on, report that, and then the planning commission has the discretion to do with them what they will.
And my reason for that question would be, at that point, I guess there's two things. One, it seems like at that point, if the planning commission determines, turns it down 08, they still have an appeal. Whereas if they don't have a complete application, they don't even have a right to be on the agenda. Would that not be correct? I mean, do we not have certain things that are required to even be placed on the agenda to come up with a vote?
I would say if we had a different fact situation, we would be more inclined to do that. I had one of the DAS applications was not complete in time to be heard on October 7th, so I moved it to October 21st so that we had an opportunity to get all the additional information. But given where we were with this particular time and getting the applications out of them and still meeting the October 31st deadline, October 21st was the last chance. So they were placed on the agenda and for the applicant's own risk as far as the quality of their application. But I guess Mr. Bankston might weigh in on that. But if they don't do anything, we still had a public hearing that was carried over to November 4th, and it would still have to appear on their agenda for action.
If I may, I think we have kind of a mixed administrative and legal matter here. I'll look to Mr. Gage and Mr. Andrew to confirm my, I'll briefly comment on the administrative aspect. I would not expect that we would view staff as having simply a veto authority with regard to a particular application and that, well, the rest of that is, in this particular case, planning commissioners made us aware quickly that that was their primary concern at the outset of their consideration of the matter. I recommended at that time that they isolate the question of the adequacy of the application from the substance of the matter. And they did so, and no input, no public input, or really no input from the applicant was taken as to the substance of the matter, strictly what might have precipitated this seeming inadequacy of the application. So there was no substantive discussion. It did become clear from the discussion from the planning commission that they did want to give the applicant opportunity. I would think that as we now progress to this additional opportunity that the planning commission has provided, that if there is a problem with the adequacy of the application this next time, that becomes a part of the substantive discussion of the merits of the application and that we're to that point where it would be considered as part of the whole picture, if that's helpful. We found ourselves in a bit of a quandary in that, I know I happened to be there by virtue of the DAS agenda items, and while indicating that we couldn't speak for the city commission, we found ourselves speaking for the city commission in terms of this deadline question. But once we knew that the planning commission wanted to afford them the opportunity to correct or complete the application, we then knew that we had to continue the public hearing. We were in a noticed public hearing context. So we couldn't really just say, well, we had to set that over in order to carry out the wishes of the planning commission and found ourselves somewhat speaking for you in terms of the additional period of days that would allow that to occur. So I guess back to my initial point, if I'm correct, that even as this expanded or corrected application might come to staff, is it fair to say that you all did not perceive yourselves as just having a veto authority when presented with that type of situation?
I will just qualify that by saying, if you submit an application and there's an application fee involved and you don't pay the fee, then we're not going to do anything with your application. If you are a tenant and you file an application for a particular use of a property and you don't have the owner's signature consent, we won't do anything with your application. But as a general rule, we will help an applicant as much as they desire to be helped. And if not, then we accept the application as long as there's an application fee, it's signed by the right people, and then the applicant rises and falls based on the completeness or merits of their application. But we certainly, not all of our applications are easy, and we certainly assist people with the process.
Commissioners, I don't know if this will help. Well, we were talking, I went to the zoning code where it refers to the application for a conditional use permit. And I think one of the things we're talking about is the due process for the applicant. And what it says there is, it says, "An application," this is section 42-597.2B, says, "An application for a conditional use permit shall be filed with the office of the zoning administrator who shall afford a copy to the secretary of the planning commission. The application shall contain the following information." And then that's really it, then it gets into the next section on the hearing and so forth. I guess the thought being is that if it's a process that is really controlled and for the benefit of the planning commission, unless we would in our zoning code indicate a fully complete application, it's a possibility we could be compromising the due process by withholding consideration from the planning commission. In that case, the planning commission, as Greg mentioned, might say, well, thank you, staff, you brought it, you were supposed to do that, but it's incomplete, so we could either give them a chance or we could deny them, and then you start over based on whatever that process would be.
But do the requirements stated in the part of the code that you began to read relate to the requirements being asked for on the application?
That I don't know with respect to whether they specifically match up. Yeah, that's a good question.
Because these are asking for, I mean, it is a conditional use, so you're being asked to provide information.
Those items are based on the factors that the planning commission is required to consider with every conditional use permit application. They're required to consider adverse effect on neighbors, they're required to consider potential benefits to the welfare and convenience of the public, domination of the neighborhood, adequacy of parking, those things. Those are part and parcel of every conditional use permit that they're supposed to take into consideration.
All right. I mean, it just seems that by not answering at all, it's inadequate.
Yeah.
I mean, or not, you haven't met, I mean, especially when at the top of the page it says, "Provide written responses for all," underlined, "the following requests." So I just, and like I said, I don't know if that's related to, in the development code, what the specific requirements are.
Yeah, without reviewing that more closely, I couldn't tell if it matches up. The other probably, the item that creates a little bit more complexity is the type of decision also requires a public hearing. We set that public hearing date, there's an expectation of a public hearing unless certain things occur, and that probably adds a little more complexity to. Typically, in one of these things, if there's any question whatsoever, you don't want to step on a due process, right, and give them a reason to challenge you there. So in this case, I don't know if that was a consideration of the planning commission, but it's probably easier just to say, okay, we'll give you, we'll give you a shot, you're going to have your public hearing, we're not going to do it today, we can give you one more shot, you better go do it right, you come back, if you don't do it right, we're going to take it up because it's our item. But guess what? If you're incomplete, we're probably, and I'm not going to speak for them, but they have the ability to say, we're probably going to not approve you, or we won't approve you at that time.
Well, I mean, I seem to recall that there was no, nobody was here when we made the, when we made the extension of the moratorium, but I do recall comments being made and you providing very clear and concise information affirming that, yes, in fact, these applicants would have plenty of time to get everything completed and plenty of time to make the process work. My main concern in this thing is that, have there been any other applications made by any people wanting to make a conditional use application outside of these two for the same?
I've had some conversations with some individuals, but nobody who's gotten so far as to picking a location and trying to pursue one. So right now, these are the only two.
Okay. Is this application on two pages or is it front and back?
Well, it's a two-page application. To save paper, we will usually put it in the packet as a front and back form, but it's an application that has page one and page two.
So there was hardly any way for them not to know that two pages were included?
Well, they're stapled together, so you have to un-staple it to do that, so.
So this is probably front and back. Here's my thing.
Well, the blank page was returned with the application.
But it was a front-back, and the front makes you sign it right here at the bottom. I think it's pretty reasonable to assume that these people read down here, signed it, and assumed they were done with it. We're discussing this thing 15 minutes, I say, let's bury this thing and let's move along. So we're spending way too much time trying to assume what's going on. I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to make sure that people are filling out their paperwork right, but we're assuming that they were somehow defying us by not filling out the back paper.
But that doesn't explain the fact that the gentleman said he's never even seen the entire application and put it on somebody else.
I mean.
So, I mean, I think that that, I think that that has a little bit of bearing in this thing as far as responsibility goes.
Staff's going to help them out, they don't get it done, they don't get it done, and they roll their dice, they take their chance. But we're like going on 15 minutes on this thing, and it's like, this should be the easiest one of the whole night.
Well, we spent three months on it making the extensions, and quite frankly, if they would have spent 15 minutes on it, we wouldn't have to.
We wouldn't be here. I agree, but we're here, and now we're the ones burning up our evenings. So it's, maybe if there's no one from the public that's got anything on this, let's move this sucker along.
So we have identified option one there on page three that we think is the most reasonable option, and that's the only part that's under their control. And that would allow them to have their decision occur after October 31st, but would give them a deadline of the 29th if they are going to resubmit to get it done by 5:00 that day.
Okay.
So November 29th?
October 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's going to be Wednesday at 5:00.
But we're looking at a date to extend this moratorium. What would the date of that moratorium need to be extended to?
We're suggesting that the first one was based on the idea that they would have a decision in hand for their two locations by the 31st. Rather, because we don't know what the outcome's going to be or what those timeframes were, we're suggesting that your direction be to allow them to this Wednesday at 5:00 to submit revised applications. And that you're basically saying that... And that you're basically saying that allowing a decision to be made on November fourth, you're giving them that additional time from October thirty first to November fourth to get a decision on their applications.
And that gives them due process, so.
That is giving them their due process.
What I'm getting at is, if, if we have a moratorium and it expires and, and we are extending, do we not have to extend that moratorium?
The, the moratorium has expired, this was simply a motion that extended the timeframe under which we would not enforce the ordinance. So, if they go through this whole process and they are denied, then they are going to have to close their doors.
Right.
And, and this only relates to these two businesses, the ordinance is otherwise in effect.
I guess, I apologize, is that, is the date on that then November fourth? They have until November?
Well, what we're suggesting is that it is not, it's not useful to have that date in there because we don't know what the outcome date is going to be. So, what you're doing is you're saying that we're going to extend the time period for filing their applications and that you understand and acknowledge that November fourth is past October thirty first.
There are multiple possible outcomes, including denial, an appeal on their part, approval, and objection by adjoining property owners to try to anticipate all those, we couldn't come up with a date certain. So, we, and the only thing that's in their control is to turn the application in, and then it'll be processed by the planning commission, possibly by you, depending on the outcome of the planning commission consideration. So, we thought, we'll just impose their deadline on them and then let the process flow from there.
So, we would not have to come back to you again.
There you go.
I mean, it's only fifteen minutes.
A quick question, if, if for some reason they don't turn it in in time and they're eventually denied, or if they're denied by the merits for whatever reason and they don't appeal, how long do they have to wait to reapply?
They have to wait six months.
Six months, okay. Just to give you an idea.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, thanks. Anyone from the public? Maybe extend this thing out a little longer here. Any staff want to ask questions of us? Okay. I'm dying up here, so, okay, seeing none. I'll accept the motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion here. Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend the conditional use permit deadline, uh, date and allow the businesses known as Juicy's located at twenty-three fourteen South Ninth Street and Vapes located at eleven one seventeen East Iron Avenue until five P M. Wednesday, October twenty ninth, two thousand fourteen, to submit amended applications for consideration by the planning commission, for consideration by planning commission on November fourth, two thousand fourteen, and allow the continued operation of the bars currently open and operating pending full consideration of their applications by the city of Salina.
Second.
Second.
Let me sneeze. Yeah, I added three more seconds to this. Motion is second to extend the conditional use permit deadline to, is that five P M. Wednesday, October twenty ninth, or is that the, the November fourth, I'm sorry?
Twenty ninth.
November, October twenty ninth?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty fourteen. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Who's this on to other business? Are there any other business? I hope not.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, second. Did you move?
I think the clerk moved to adjourn. That's a first, but you know what? Let's go with that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?